So we are in open session on Thursday, September twenty fourth. It is twelve twenty roughly. We are in the open session portion of our board retreat. I just remember the little when we do our board priorities. I had one little housekeeping issue. I had emailed all board members a revised timeline for our superintendent search. And asked you all to take a look at that. And, you know, make sure it reflected our conversation. Does anyone does anyone have any concerns about where it's at right now? Or can I message to the search firm that we will we will move forward with that timeline?
I'll be honest, I didn't see it, but it represents our conversation.
Okay, so the next steps for us is I will start ser- I will ask probably Janine to start surveying the board for times for interviews in December. If you notice those, you know, the spelled out did most time, you're gonna have to give some votes to that process. As well as seeking some ideas and feedback for those organizations or groups that should be considered. For um uh focus groups. Focus groups, thank you so much, yes, for focus groups. So in the near future, you'll see me an email about that, looking for some feedback. Okay, thank you for that. It is yours, Lori.
Alright, so here we are, part three, four of our retreat today. And glad you're in open session, so the community can hear this very important work that you're doing discussing your priorities as a district. That's your number one role as a school board. Set the vision for your district. So in your folder are your board priorities. And what I've done, and the the quickest way to determine what's going well and not so much, especially with our shortened time, is I have taken each priority that you have. The heading budget, community relations, health and wellness, social emotional learning, optimal time for learning, over here is technology, and school safety and security. And we're gonna do a little plus delta exercise. And I've got you, I think, social distance enough. So if each one of you picks one of these, and I would like you to put what's gone really well this year, where where you feel that you're in a good place around this priority. And the delta in math terms, the change that you'd like to see or that that needs, it's an opportunity for growth. Alright, so we're gonna start with that, and you just take your pen. Pick one, and then as one gets done, and you can keep your distance from each other and shifting, you know, just keep shifting and going around until you've put all of your thoughts, the plus, the delta, on each one of these priorities. And then once we've all gotten through all of them, I'll bring it back together and we'll synthesize it. Any questions? Alright, go forward. Go take a pick one, there's school facilities back here, technology's over here. Alright, well, thank you for doing that. So quickly, especially, it was awesome. Um, so what I'd like to do next is, as you have your last year's twenty nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty priorities at hand, um, let me go over what your plus delta for budget, we're gonna start with budget. And from that, let's see if there are some new priorities that come to mind, often from the delta portion. So here's budget, here's your pluses. Um, balanced budget. Transportation. Another balanced budget, lots of balanced budgets without making severe cuts. And then pre-COVID, this was going well. Any other thoughts around that, on the the good, uh, the pluses, your budget? Good, and then here is the delta. Um, oh gosh, I'm so sorry, that can't be. Nat monitoring, uh, oh. Oh, nat nat monitoring, change of expense during COVID. Refunding fees. Ensure competitive bids are received, I mean, whatever are necessary.
That's transportation.
Oh, okay, this, okay. Okay, uh, you're talking about transportation bids. Ensure competitive bids are received by whatever are necessary to obtain them. Provide options for space within the district. Explore fee refunds. Need better understanding of fee components. Need to monitor closely the budget. And post-COVID, we need to evaluate continuously and be prepared to change and adapt. Alright, so from that, and you look at your current board priorities, maintain a balanced budget, monitor food service, review transportation program. From that, tell me, what additions, attractions do you think you need around your board priorities?
I I like including maintain a balanced budget. Yes. I think that that speaks to our commitment to that, and I think it's a good community's use of that.
Okay.
And knows that that's a component of ours. Alright, excellent.
There's gonna be a stress this next year because of COVID, the unknowns that are still out there.
I think we're gonna have to talk louder.
Yeah.
I don't know where the recording is, but if I just, where is it? That's what I got. Okay, so there are either ends, so just make sure we're talking louder.
The microphone's right in the way.
Oh, my seat.
Okay.
Steering right, I'm coming my way.
I'm very, yeah, I'm moving around here.
Angel, that seat gets hot, just so you know.
Oh, is this where? I'm on the side. Am I, and you hear me?
So, um, the other point that was written down, if I remember, was related to transportation bids.
Mm-hmm.
And I, in the next calendar year, will we be going out for transportation bid? I don't think so, because we just did a two-year extension.
No, not this year.
Yeah, I think we have a two-year extension.
It's next year, it's not this year, it's not not twenty twenty-one.
So is that something we want to improve this year, or something we should tuck in the back of our minds for next year?
The latter.
Is everybody agree?
I think it was out of here from the standpoint that people were concerned with the escalating cost with the bell time campaign. That's why I think this was the vision we got.
Yeah, you're right. It has to do with going on a new trail, like the expenses gap.
Well, but when, on here though, it said review transportation program. I think that, if I remember our conversation correctly, that was, we wanted to, we wanted the administration to look at how we might garner some more savings. And so if you remember, we had an exercise.
And we did that.
But they did, and we came back and they shared with us different ways that we could, um, you know, tighten up our budget for transportation, but none of them were a path that the board wanted to go down at that time.
Yeah, we did that analysis on using the the software and the revenue.
So.
That was back in the fall, a year ago.
So, I mean, that's to the review transportation program, but the comment here was about seeking additional bids and things like that. So, so would it be okay if nothing related to transportation comes off this budget? Or do we want to have something here with transportation?
I did kind of monitor very carefully, just to make sure hypothetically our current provider is still around. Post-COVID, based on the last conversation we went to in the spring.
So, um, monitor.
I almost would put that in the food vendor on the same line, because we kind of have these, you know, very analogous issues going on with both.
I agree. If we're gonna be doing it, it's just gonna be, yeah.
So, so maybe budget stays the same?
But just monitor food service and transportation program, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of deal.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So based on what came up was on the sheet, um, are we okay moving forward on this?
Oh, there was a couple of explore fee refunds.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Nope, yep. Uh, need better understanding of fee components. Was that transportation and food service that you're referring to?
No, no, student fees.
So I guess.
All student fees, yep.
So review or monitor, how do I word it, because I think we have to
Can we review?
Review, evaluate?
Review student fees?
Review.
Review and evaluate student fees? Because that would kind of capture everything that was written here.
But ten are done anyway for this year. And we put it all up.
We 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 already approved them, the student fees.
No, but we had a conversation about re- looking at them again in January to consider if there was anything that we could respond to that that could be charging.
Right on. What you just said was, I think we already approved them, right? Or discount the student fees.
We approved student fees for this calendar last, in last spring. But I, what I'm hearing, what what I'm referring to are comments here about board members wanting to explore in this calendar year, um, review and evaluate fees. And and when I say review and evaluating, I'm capturing all of those comments, so pondering our.
How about analyze, how about analyze student fees?
Okay.
Because I think that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna be an analysis, no board can make the decision on how you want to proceed. I mean, I'm already asked, Dave and I have talked a lot about this, we're gonna try to do a whole analysis and breakdown to help the board make that decision or discussion, you know.
Because we're gonna come back in January, that was our commitment to come back to January and see where we're at to see if we could.
What do you think about analyze, or or if you want more, it's about the verbs, truthfully.
Yeah.
I mean, all these are action statements, right?
Yeah.
I I wonder what you want.
Just analyze, okay, everybody analyze and break down. I think analyze is like.
And analyze covers that.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna do, I mean, I get the action.
Student fees, student fees, right?
Student fees.
Where did we get student fees? Correct.
So for your budget, you have maintain balanced budget, monitor food service and transportation program, analyze student fees. Good?
Okay.
Ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, because of the way my sticky notes are here, and I don't want to make so much noise, can you go to health and wellness?
Sure.
Thank you. So here's the plus for health and wellness, um, increased awareness of best practices. For example, hand washing. Um, increased awareness of social distance and, I'm so sorry. Oh.
Social emotional.
And and health of other students, parents.
Mental health.
Men, oh, thank you very much, and mental health of other students, parents, teachers, and staff. Another plus, I like that we have the wellness committee. Okay, um, opportunities for growth. We'll need to provide a large amount of assistance to buildings as we start bringing students back into the buildings. Um, lots of change due to COVID. Uh, should should we be moving forward? This is very important in COVID, more is better, health and wellness. So your current priorities around health and wellness, educate and prevent adolescent risk behaviors. Where do you want to go here?
If we mentioned COVID, some way, somewhere, the elephant heard.
Yeah.
I agree.
Do you want to keep the risk behaviors, because that was directly related, if you remember, to our SCL data. That was where that came from.
Yep.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think we should keep it there and add some improvement.
I, the first statement that you read about, um, increased awareness of better practices. No, I'm sorry, there was one about preparing schools.
Yes, providing a large amount of assistance to buildings as we start bringing students back into them.
Because that could be financial.
How about something like ensure, great verb is, um, building, these would fund the nets for COVID, preparedness for COVID or something like that.
So.
Secure.
Secure your best practices.
It's.
Secure your best practices for COVID's safety and or.
It's the protocols, it's the health protocols due to the COVID, due to the pandemic, really.
Ensure advance to health protocols.
Yeah.
Yeah, adherence is good.
That's what it is, it's really the prot- and the protocols may evolve, is why I would, you know, like, as we all have seen, right?
Can you say, um, adherence and awareness? Like all the signs everywhere, tho- those kinds of things, making everybody, you know, aware.
Enhance or implement?
Sure.
I like that word, educate.
Education.
Okay, alright. Educate and implement, so I'm, sorry.
Ensure adherence to and edu-
Okay.
-ation related to COVID, uh, health.
Protocols.
Health, COVID and healthcare. COVID nineteen health protocols.
Yeah.
So right now you have educate and prevent adolescent risk behaviors. Ensure adherence to and education related to COVID nineteen health protocols. Anything else around health and wellness? Alright, let's keep going. The next one, under my big pile, is social emotional learning. So positives for Varing Ten, excellent work toward collecting data, communicating priorities with diversity and cultural sensitivity. Pre-COVID, huh, we were doing really well. Mental health, increased efforts. Uh, teacher's ability to check in with students in distance learning models. And then opportunities for growth, need to be sure no one falls through the cracks during this COVID time for students, staff, or community, we have a ditto there, so two people felt the same way. Uh, now it is different world, so we need to continue to improve, that was a pre-COVID, now this is post-COVID. Very worried about the social emotional needs of kids that are missed when not in the buildings. Um, oh yeah, here we have a crossover, teacher's ability to check in, needs to occur for every student somehow. We need to add equity and diversity and inclusion here. Uh, direction of equity, we need to set a goal, develop a plan around equity. Lots of good stuff there. So your current ones are for social emotional learning, foster additional citizenship, promote cultural sensitivity, strengthen self-awareness and empathy.
Are we able to check any of these off our list? And build a new list?
Foster digital citizenship? Does that?
I think we still need that.
Yeah, I do, okay.
They're not helping enough, and they're still bullying, and they're still over threats.
So instead of.
It doesn't go away, none of this stuff goes away, it's just a matter of what's the focus, so keep that in mind, right?
I mean, I think.
We can do anything, we can't do everything, so.
Yeah.
The last one's the self-awareness resilience, uh.
Great.
With with respect to the COVID, or how would you?
So my thought about the next two, just to throw out, is that I think when we first created these, they were definitely under the equity, race, and cultural awareness kind of umbrellas. I'm wondering if we need a new headline. Um, do we, do we put something about equity, race, and cultural awareness under social emotional learning, or do we have a new headline?
Yeah, we should give it all new.
Maybe headline.
Something.
Oh, I might, I might give them a new headline.
So, so add an eighth?
Yes.
Priority.
Okay, I think we put these alphabetical last time. Yes, everything was on the top, bullets are all to the top.
Yes.
I could spell better. Yeah, it's, I did, that was it.
Um, and I'm, I'm fine if we want to populate the bullets under that later, or if we want to organize together since we appear on shake, shake sheets.
So tell me again the name of the heading.
Brian.
Culture, equity, culture, what is, what is name type?
I'm.
Equity, race, and cultural citizenship, so.
Yeah, we're raising cultural sensitivity, I think.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay, yeah, well, so that, either way you want to write that's okay, it definitely will line up exactly with the job.
Well, I, I mean, it it was all, I didn't know.
Yeah. Equity is a key word.
Social equity, we need to, we talked a lot about social equity, as opposed to just as a meeting.
You could move, uh, promote cultural sensitivity, not a social emotional learning, that, that option. That that's the goal, it's right.
Okay, so.
So can we move the second and third bullet under social emotional learning, to produce a new headline?
Under the new headline?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
My other thought for the new headline is that I would like to give a bold, some kind, my thought is, um, to, like, give the administration responsibility of developing a plan to present to the board. Um, is to try to think of what we want to add.
Empower the superintendent? Or empower?
You want even more action, right?
These are board actions, I mean, it's good believe of an action.
Deliver. Yeah.
Right, so.
Develop, um, you know, that's what we're having.
I I'd like to, what I'd like to know, can the administrators do is assess the community, assess our our structures, and come back to us with a recommendation or feedback on how things we can, we can take to make things better.
And I would say complete a district and community assessment or something, you know. But you're, what you're asking there is a task, it's like completing something, right?
What what does everybody else think?
That's what you're asking.
Well, that's my idea.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to, we don't have to agree with it.
Thinking assess and recommend.
You could do that, too.
Because.
Okay.
Because, uh.
I like that.
Assess, yeah, but I think that's.
Assess and recommend equity issues in our schools and community.
Equity improvements.
Well, you're as a recommendation, so.
Well, you're, you're, it's implied that approval needs to occur, but until we do the assessment, I mean, what I mean is, I.
Right, well, that's.
You know what I mean? I want to make sure we're focused on the right things. When we do this work, I don't want to just assume something.
So.
If something, you know what I mean, and that's part of the assessment, right?
Is everyone in agreement that we, that this is something that we would value?
Yes.
Maybe assess and evaluate.
Okay. Is that alright?
I think I'd like your recommendation, I mean.
Is that fair?
I'm writing some on there.
Assess and evaluate and recommend.
There you go.
There you go.
Assess, evaluate, and recommend.
Comment, comment, comment.
Okay. Um. It's a safe word, I guess it's up as a heading, it's already there.
Improvements in equity, race, and, um.
I think.
Possible improvement.
Equity, race, and cultural issues, I mean, or cultural improvements, maybe, I, it looks, that's fine.
Possible improvement. When you're not applying.
Yeah, qualified, right?
That's good, that's good. Welcome to all of our administrations.
Wordsmith.
Yes.
I'm gonna read this to you, I just want to make sure I've got the spirit correctly, uh, here, um. Oh, gosh. Really, yeah. Um, assess, evaluate, and recommend possible improvements in equity, race, and cultural. I missed the last word.
Sensitivity?
Sensitivity, so the title.
So.
Um.
You're gonna review this again, right?
You know what?
I.
And recommend improvements around equity, race, and culture.
Yeah, I think you captured.
Is that good?
And discuss them, aren't you, right?
Yeah.
You captured the spirit of it, but we'll probably rehash.
Good. You you guys do the wordsmith thing, I'll do my. Alright, so that's it, so the the new heading is equity, race, and cultural sensitivity. And here are, here's what you have, promote cultural, uh, oh, sorry.
Has it through it?
Thank you. Yes, promote, promote cultural sensitivity, strengthen self-awareness and empathy, and then the one I just. Alright, so now let's go back though, social emotional learning. Now that I've gotten those there, um, and what would you like to do here?
Here, plus, additional citizenship, there's a lot ongoing on.
I I just took it for thought on that. The citizenship is broader than digital. I did want to foster citizenship including digital, I don't know if you want to make the wording change, but I'm I'm working as a parent at balancing both, you know. An ongoing balancing that, because kind of a new language that I didn't grow up with, the digital. So, uh, I just had a conversation two nights ago about that.
So when you say citizenship by itself, can you elaborate on what that means a little bit more, so you make sure it's in the right spot?
Sure, I mean, I think it applies to the same things you mean when you say digital citizenship in a broader context.
Well, how about voting, voting is citizenship, is that included in that?
Responsible.
Yes, I agree.
Only if you're eligible and only once, Barry.
That's the question.
Right. Except in Chicago, in early in October.
So yes?
What's the question?
When you say citizenship, do you, various examples of voting, separate meaning?
Or or just civic awareness, I mean, you know, but.
No, I, see, when I, when I hear digital citizenship, I know, I've read the material. It's about how we treat each other digitally, right? Not, not bullying, that kind of thing. Um, not posting inappropriate content. Um, so, you know, the same can be said for in-person, right? You don't want to bully, you don't want bullying in any capacity, digitally or otherwise, for example.
I think when we wrote this, we were thinking about like life balance, being on the phone at the dinner table, like not bullying on these devices, and trying to encompass that as a skill. But I, I kind of feel like for social emotional learning this season, we need to focus on are all kids' social emotional needs in our district being met or just being left behind? Kind of like, of course, you brought that one up.
Yeah, I agree with, that was mine, and that's kind of where I'm going here, is it's beyond the digital.
I see that comment a few times, under the delta, I'm very worried about needing kids that are missed and not in the buildings.
Actually, that should be a separate heading, you know, we still do, if you don't want digital citizenship, whatever, you want to talk about digital and then talk, again, from the bigger picture of what's happening to everybody now because of COVID.
Yes.
So we got one bullet, foster digital citizenship, because we still feel we, that's, we're on the road, right?
I could wonder, technology, could, I am just saying, if you wanted to relocate it.
I think.
I think that's awful back and forth over the years, so.
I think, yeah, one of the reasons we, I think we had it there was some importance mentioned here, but also that students were kind to one another and.
Yeah.
So, so do we still want it under social emotional learning for now, we can move it later?
Yes, I'll give you a second.
Okay, so, um, I'm unch- I I'm, I feel I'm uncomfortable just putting the word citizenship here, only because
Sure.
it means so many things to so many of our people.
Right.
Um.
It's just something else.
Think about it, think about how we might say that.
Barry, do you have any other thoughts that I can say the separate thing?
I don't know where it's.
I mean, you know, when we talked about strength and self-awareness and empathy, I mean, I'm feeling like that, that's how I'm interpreting some of what you're saying.
I read what the comments said, that I feel like there's something, um, we're worried about social emotional learning and.
Well, we need to be sure no one falls between the cracks during this COVID time, right? So do we? There's a lot of COVID talk here.
I feel like we have kind of, what's proactive word or something, about how we're addressing social emotional.
How about, I like your word proactive, be proactive about, um.
What we're here is of.
What about engaging with students?
Yeah, like that we're engaging.
Need a lack of engagement.
Engaging students.
Engaging students to ensure their health and health, social emotional well-being.
Social health.
Needs are being met.
Yes.
Okay.
Their needs are being met. Is that something?
I'll read it back to you here to make sure.
Yeah.
And again, it's capturing the essence of it, definitely.
Yes, absolutely. So foster digital citizenship, and number two, engaging students to ensure SCL needs are being met.
No proactive in it.
Okay.
Like proactive being.
Proactive engagement of students? Okay. Anything else under social emotional learning?
For now.
And that's our big one.
Okay, excellent. So now if we can go back to community relations. Here's your positives for community relations, you passed a referendum, woo-hoo! Um, you add we care, reemphasize about our students, families, to our messaging. Another good idea. Uh, we always need to improve, so we need to try very hard to do a lot. We continue to encourage fee.
We continue to encourage feedback and input from all community members, those are the positives. Here's room for improvement, communication of board decision, uh, board decision-making process. Community as stakeholders, improved community engagement, explore how to get community involved that aren't, uh, currently and transparency, need to establish regular board interaction opportunities with the community. I.e. the town hall, speak to other elected boards, and we always need to keep, uh, oh, communicating clearly, so clarity there. So your current ones are expand strength and community engagement. Which that covers investigate strategic plan options and the referendum, looks like you checked that off.
So we take referendum off, check that off.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, one of the words you said that I really liked, I want to include is transparency, that the way we can make that into some kind of priority, with respect to community relations.
What if we edit that to expand and strengthen community engagement and transparency with transparency? Do you want it on its own?
I, I'd love you to please send me those, because I just like that word transparency.
Expand and strengthen community engagement with transparency.
With an emphasis on transparency?
With an emphasis on transparency. Is everyone else good with that? Yeah. Anything else under, so what about investigate strategic plan options? Well, I think that one of the decisions that are made is that that should be the role of the new superintendent. So I think that that would probably come off next years and beyond the following years. Okay.
Wouldn't it be hire and onboard a superintendent, I mean.
Well, I, I was there, it's not an extra title, that's extra, I had here and wanted to add.
I was considering, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, that's a huge community, I mean, I know when a new superintendent comes in, that's a significant piece, I'm just saying, so, I'm not playing out the springtime.
How about engage community and hiring onboard a new superintendent?
Well, I was thinking it should be on the heading.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because it's a significant thing that the board has to do, and we can bullet those under there.
Okay, oh, okay, okay.
Do you wanna go there now? Are we done with this one, though? Um, you tell me, community relations, so I, I see, um, need to establish regular board interaction opportunities with your community. So I put it there, and one of the reasons I did, you know, back when we were doing the referendum, some of us had the opportunity to volunteer to go speak to different village boards and township boards, things like that, and I can tell you that the feedback I got from those organizations was very positive, they want to hear what we have to say, they're interested. And if the board is willing, I think it would be nice over the next, you know, this school year at least, to maybe quarterly go check in with these people, but it would take all of us to do it. Because it's a lot of work for just two or three of us. So, I'm throwing that out there as an idea.
Well, it's hard to do that now too. Very hard to do this.
Oh, I thought most village boards were, you know. I actually sat in on one with you Penny, I don't know if you knew I was watching or not, you were doing a Zoom with Anisistive Living. Oh, with, with Bacoa. Yes. I'm like, well, this is amazing, it was really actually, and they had some great questions and, and it was over Zoom, but it was still community engagement. Yeah.
Well, is that part of expanding and strengthening, we decided, it wouldn't have to be its own budget.
But, but this is a board priority, though not an administrative priority, I think that's the difference that I see in this, that the board would have to take action.
It's a community relation.
I mean, thumbs up, thumbs down, it's looking, if no one really wants to do it, we can, we can put it on.
I think it would be a good thing in this hard time, but we're all spread thin is the hard thing, and it's also important with the new superintendent search to get community information and I went to one, one place too, and, and one community, and I got a lot of feedback too, so you would have to do the homework on how their needs are, if they're in person, if they're saying what we're comfortable with, they are, but if we spread out over a year and we all go to one or two, it's more manageable.
This is something we wanna try to bite off this year or not?
Why can't it, why can't it fall under expand, strengthen community engagement and then the current community relations?
Well, I, it can, we can figure where to put it, I just wanna know if the board's even interested in doing it.
Should expand and strengthen community engagement.
But it, but this, like, are board members willing to be, you know, to be up in time to do it?
We're not, we can't see that two days from now.
I would need to.
Okay, so I'm hearing no right now, I mean, it's always something we can revisit later if we become more comfortable with where we're at. So right now, community relations, expand, strengthen community engagement with emphasis on transparency. Thumbs up. Okay, outstanding, and then hire a new superintendent, big priority, and I heard, um, involving stakeholders, engaging stakeholders in the processor, in the process, in the process.
Engaging.
And it's on heading, you wanted to be told, not under the convention, but it's on heading.
I, I, well, that would be my preference, because I think it's gonna be a lot of work taken on by the board, and I think it deserves the prominence, but I would prefer to you guys.
It's, I, I, it's not just community, I mean, there's, it's, it's gonna be our board priorities, I think it's separate priorities, it's, it's wild.
That's fine. Hire a new superintendent, engage all stakeholders, and the hiring process. Anything else? Okay, moving on, how we doing, are you, we're, we're really, do you wanna keep me going, you wanna keep, you wanna finish this out?
I want more to go.
I think we just have.
Do you want, do you want? Do you wanna just, school safety, security? Send them to us and then, I don't know, just, if you need to move on, Penny, if we just.
Yeah. Would you, would you, you know what, I, is it okay with everyone if we move on? Yeah. Could you, like, typically what would happen is we get, yeah, Brian and I would give a summary of everything, and then Yes, I am. Um, the board can revisit the last two, can you just note on there? Yeah. I sure will. Get to, I have been taking notes, trusting you were gonna set them to. I've got notes, I will.
There's a two minute left, what's school safety and what was the other one?
Um, school safety, optimal time for learning, and then there was one more here, which was technology. Okay, so we'll revisit those, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hopefully at our next meeting, if our time allows, otherwise, no problem. Um, well, then, my time here is done, but I do want to end by thanking all of you so much for your time today, especially taking time out of a workday for this very important work that we do, uh, thank you for all that you do, these extraordinary times. And yes, I will send next staff along, and you can take a look, please, at your next board meeting. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your house, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, you bet, thank you, all right, I know we kind of, kind of crazy people, but. No, it's all, you know what, lots of good work going on here, it's all good.
Janice, can we move that table, we close the chairs, or?
Here, I can help you, Janice.
Can we just push it over here?
You want these two chairs, would it now, would you take theirs off?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just spread them out there.
Okay. Are these people up to follow you tonight? Well, that will bring in the first three, okay.
Janice, they have to move this table.
I'm sure if you would take your center seat, and then ladies, we can put our chairs over there, or if it's right here. Okay, um, welcome to our meeting, thanks for coming out today. And the board requested that I, say a few words before we start public comment session. Um, and the first is that, um, we know that there's been a lot of, we've received a lot of emails, and while we all have had time to respond to each one of those emails, we have written down. Um, in addition, there are a lot of rumors flying around that, you know, we received a communication about specifically a return to school plan that only includes only one day of in-person instruction, and that only was a member of the plan that we have endorsed today that's not does not limit returning to one day a week, so I just wanted you to know that ahead of time. In addition, because this was, we, our meeting was supposed to be a board retreat and a goal-setting time, and so because of the, um, interest of the board and the community around getting this moving, um, we added this discussion item onto this meeting, and, um, therefore we are gonna be losing a couple of board members, one at one thirty and several at two thirty. So I just wanted you to know, and not to be offended if someone gets up and leaves, the other thing is, we are also gonna have to limit our public comment to fifteen minutes. Because of that reason, because we have to get through all of this information, so limited to fifteen minutes, and um, I only have five people signed up, so I'm gonna ask you to, just in case there's someone else out there, to limit your comments to two minutes instead of the traditional three. And also say that at two thirty, um, and I don't want this to be any reflection poorly on any other board member, but if people have to leave, they can, but if there are more people that would like to speak during public comment, I am willing to stay and listen. So, with that being said, um, we've now come to the portion of our meeting, we've set aside public comment. We validate your thoughts and opinions, and yes, that you state your name, elementary attendance area and or relationship to the district. We asked you to limit your comments today to two minutes, Janice has a timer and a little bell. While this is not a conversation, if comments required for your intention, we ask Dr. Harris to follow up and report back to the board. So, um, we are without our traditional microphones and everything, oh, the other thing I wanted to add is that um, we are taping this meeting, we were not able to livestream, but we are taping this meeting and posted, um, following the meeting to our website. So, sorry for all that, but.
So my name is Marsha McClary, I'm the mother of five children in Barrington, I grew up here, um, I'm a business owner, and, um, I'm very invested in the future of our students and our children in this community, and we moved back here for the great schools, and we expect that to continue. We thank you all for your service, we know that these are not paid positions, and that it's a very difficult time for all of you, so thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to express, I was in the pharmaceutical industry for nineteen years. I don't think that our solution of vaccine is going to solve this, we will be dealing with this virus in waves for potentially years to come. Therefore, we need to get our students back in school full-time in the midst of that cycle. Seven cases per a hundred thousand is too difficult of a metric to do that. We have students across the country in different states going to school, doing it successfully, I realize Illinois is a tough state, but I think we need to stand up for our students and fight back on that, and push and get our students back in school. I feel very strongly, example, my seventh grader is struggling substantially with the e-learning. Yesterday, we had a live Zoom class, and the teacher just checked them in, they had thirty minutes to read, checked them out, that was it. I've had it, okay, and I realize, I, we've been very gracious and patient, and I realize it's difficult, but we have to advocate for our students. And the vaccine is not the answer, it will not happen, we will not put that in healthy people without long-term data, and that's how I feel. We have seen viator is open, kids are going, St. Anne is open, kids are going, I moved my daughter to St. Anne's, paying extra for that. But that's not what everybody can do here, not everybody has the financial resources for that, and we have to speak up for those that can't even be here, because they have to work and watch their kids all day. So I, I, I beg you, please advocate for our children, get them back to school full-time as soon as possible. I get the safety, if we have to cut gym, if we have to bring lunch, whatever it takes, we are here to help you, parents, we will help you. I will sit and be an aide in the class, I promise, to do whatever we can to get these kids in class, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna acknowledge that people did sign up in a particular order, but since the three of you are here, I'll let you go first, and then because of our constraints, if you wouldn't mind letting another person come in, if there's other people out there for public comment, so whoever would like to come back, you can go first.
My name's Nicole Molinaro, um, I have five kids, but four kids, two in high school, and one in college, and two at the middle school. Um, the current situation for us is especially frustrating for my family, given that we moved to Barrington forty years ago to give our five children the advantage of attending some of the best schools, not just in Illinois, but in the country. While we didn't, like, closing school in the spring, I understood it, however, this is not spring. A very confusing aspect of this is that several schools in Illinois have been in person for weeks now, they are navigating the circumstances. Many schools in Indiana have been in full-time in-person learning and full sports schedules for their students, and they are navigating the circumstances. Example, look at Avon High School, if you guys wanna look that up, they've been, they shut down for two weeks, reopened in hybrid, now they are five full days in session, playing sports. Their positivity rates are not what the governor says they are, they just aren't. Why not Illinois, why not Barrington, the answer isn't something like, those aren't areas with different sense of circumstance, of circumstances when it comes to the pandemic. The answer is the fear-mongering that is being done at the state government level. COVID nineteen is being used as a political football, and our children are paying the price. Back in March and April, the focus was to flatten the curve of the virus, we did that. Now the expectation is that we need a vaccine and or cure in order to get back to in-person school, that demand, that is the demand now. Dr. Harris' metric of no more than seven active cases per a hundred thousand people in the district service areas is not attainable without either a vaccine or a cure, let that sink in, if we stick with the metrics and stages set forth in the previous board meeting, we will not have full in-person school until there is a proven vaccine and or cure. Keep in mind, there's no guarantee that a vaccine is coming anytime soon or that it will be effective. We are facing a situation where our kids will not be in school the rest of the school year, and likely not even in the fall of twenty twenty-one, given the current metrics and stages. What if we never get a vaccine? Okay, well, I've, I had a little more, but the bottom line is, I mean, how, how are these metrics, this, and I've, I've emailed and I've asked you guys that question. Seven out of a hundred thousand, what virus do we ever have that for, what is strep throat, what is flu? This is insane, look at the CDC, what they just put out this week, please, like, defend our kids, I feel like hopeless and powerless, and that's how the community feels, like, it's, it's just sad, because these kids are depending on us. So, and if you guys don't have my husband's letter, I have it, does anyone want a copy? We printed it up.
If you wanna, if you want to leave your one of the G over there.
Okay, sure, I'll do that, so you guys can help, thank you.
Make sure. Are you, are you on the list?
I am, Jennifer Trombador. I'm a last-minute addition, I just want you all to know, uh, that there's about fifty people standing outside, hoping signs and getting support from the community, so I know that's not visible, but we are out there. Um, my name is Jennifer Trombatory, I have three children in Barrington School District, a freshman, a sophomore, and a fifth grader at North Barrington. Um, the reason I'm, I, I decided to step up, and I don't have statistics, and I think you all know the statistics, and these ladies did a good job of covering that, is that I have a daughter who has regressed significantly under the e-learning program, she has an IEP, she has dyslexia, and a child, and I have other friends who have children with special needs, and I will tell you that these children are the ones that are suffering the most, my daughter has regressed considerably. Um, even though, uh, the teachers that we have at our school are outstanding, the technology is hard for her to work with, her focus isn't there, so I'm here today to speak up for Caitlin. Um, she, she is the reason that we need to get back, these kids, you, you, the, the e-learning just doesn't work, the technology is hard. Even my high schoolers, if you think there's not a level of, um, cheating that's going on with, with their friends, if you think that there's not a, a level of, um, just complete disregard for tuning in, uh, you're wrong, it, it just, the technology is hard for them, the learning is hard for them, the focus is hard for them, and I'm speaking up for, for my daughter who has those special needs, especially today. That's all I have to say, I think, you know, I see pictures of my friends who have kids, who their kids are under the table crying, or they are throwing temper tantrums. You have these young children. You have these young children who can barely do addition and they're being asked to jump from one platform to the next, get a pen to work, get Zoomed to work. It's just, it's a struggle every single day.
Good to do this, but.
Yes, we're gonna leave.
Just one of our challenges.
Thank you.
One of our people in the room, thank you.
Hi y'all, how are you?
Hello.
A little tired out?
Please come, please sit down.
Right here?
Sit down there.
Sit here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll just reiterate, because I know we weren't streaming you there. Please, please limit your comments to two minutes.
Sure.
Because we're trying to tighten things up today. And Janine has a timer and a bell. And if you would mind identifying yourself and your elementary attendance area or relationship with the district. And it's not a conversation if they're solo, but I start first.
Okay. My name is Robin Doherty. I have a son, he's in eighth grade at Prairie. And I am here today to just walk you guys through the day in the life of my son because it's not working. His education, my love for him is deep and I'm here to fight for him because we're not fighting together. And this is what's ruining everything. So he, his day, he gets up, he gets on his Zoom call at nine and I go downstairs a lot of times and he's asleep on his Zoom call. He'll walk around with his iPad and it's white noise to him. He does that from nine to 1:30, comes up for lunch about 11:30 to 12:30. Then at four o'clock in our household, I sit down and I go through every lesson that he learned that day and I reteach him until 7:30, 8:30 at night. And then we do it all over again. So I am investing in my son. I am not going to give up on him. And I don't think you guys either. I think there's always going to be risk, with risks as reward. Companies have gone down by not taking risks. We cannot just stay status quo. We have to find a solution. We need to get these kids back into the classroom. Our children deserve it, my son deserves it. Every kid deserves it. And they're not learning, fooling yourself. You're, they're not learning. The girls might be doing better than the boys, but the boys are not doing well. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Robin, did you sign up under Robin Munson?
Robin Munson, yeah.
I wrote you down as Doherty though.
I know, and that's funny, I go by both.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss somebody.
No, I know, I'm Doherty Munson. Business, I'm Doherty, Barrington, I'm Munson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine, is Jake Pepper?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Um, let me ask, is there anybody else? We have time for one more. No, we're, okay. Seeing that, we will declare public comment closed. I just want to say, I am proud to serve with these people here who really care about kids. And I think if we have, there's nothing I wish that I had more than a magic wand that could make all of this go away and I'm not trying to flip it, I'm so serious. But I think everyone working in our schools and everyone sitting up here really cares about kids and the education of our kids and the social emotional health of our students. We talk about it all the time. And so please, I want anyone to ever think that we do not care because that's, that's not the case at all. So with that, I would turn it over to Dr. Harris.
Okay, and thank you for board members for extending this meeting today, obviously with a very, very important topic, which is our current status of the 2021 school year. As you can see, I've invited our educational leaders in every one of our schools here today to be able to be responsive, answer questions. I just want to publicly thank all of them for the work they have done since March 13th up to this point. And I understand the next several months are going to continue to be a challenge. At our last board meeting, when I shared the metrics and then I suggested a tentative timeline, that there was quite a bit of discussion here at the board table. And one of the outcomes of that was to try and move the timeline quicker. In other words, accelerate it, try to, you know, figure out a path forward where we could get the kids back into this hybrid mode quicker, but yet still being diligent in the work. So that's why we're here today, to talk about that. I am going to start by sharing an updated timeline, which I have here on the screen. And I know I sent this to board members last night, so you've got the opportunity to preview this, but I do want to take a few minutes and just walk through it. And after that, I'm going to ask Steve McWilliams in to talk about what the high school hybrid plan is going to look like. Travis Lovins is going to take the lead at the middle school level and Heather Schumacher will do the same thing for elementary. I have a short video, it's a three-minute video from Michelle Acosta from the ELC. She could not be here today. I've got a brother getting married in the weekend and already had plans for the day. So she did a little short video that she's actually going to push out to her parent community pending this conversation. So I'll show you that and we'll talk about the ELC's couple as well, okay? So that's, I'm going to ask each of them to talk for about five minutes about the details of the plans, but certainly want to provide an opportunity for the board to weigh in, ask questions for clarification and so on. So let me start with the timeline. Today, Thursday, September 24th, I wanted to be able to share the plans with the board. And also at the conclusion of this meeting, unless there's any significant edits or changes based on this conversation, I would like the opportunity to share this out with our staff to see. One of the pieces of feedback I got from our employees was that they would appreciate knowing in advance, you know, if we're going to be pivoting. So at least they have a preview opportunity before we share it out with parents, because they get put on the spot. And they just want to make sure that at least they can read it and understand it. So I would, that's a very important component of this. Then tomorrow, we would release the hybrid plans to the parents and the community with significant explanation behind each one, which you had an opportunity to see the preview documents. Each principal has also prepared a short video, three minutes, right? Everyone looking at everybody, with their own voice explaining what it means for their school, okay? And again, that would be another piece that's going to come directly from them to their parents at every building. And so that will go out tomorrow afternoon after the district sends out the larger communication, okay? Monday, we would then begin the parent questionnaire. I still have the word survey on here, but it should, I want to be careful with the word survey here. And I want to qualify my comment here. And we're not really asking people's opinion, we're asking to make a choice of what they would want their kids to do when we begin the hybrid model for kids attending our schools, okay? It is really, it's not intended to be a public opinion, it's intended to make the selection for your child. Do you want them to return in the hybrid mode or would you like for them to stay in the distance learning, which will continue to be an option? We will also ask them if they're going to return to the hybrid mode, will they need transportation? That will help us in our planning and we can then consolidate our routes and make sure that the buses are capacity-driven accordingly and be appropriate as well. So those are two very important questions. It'll be a quick questionnaire and we'll ask, we're going to be sending it out through every campus and ask parents to make that selection for each one of their children. They're going to have three days to do it, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week. By Wednesday then, we will close the survey at midnight on 11:59 on Wednesday. Then we spend the next two days, Thursday and Friday, following up with people who may not have made that selection, okay? We have to know 100% what the intent of every child is so we can plan accordingly to be able to implement. So our principals are prepared to have staff make those phone calls next Thursday and Friday to finalize those lists, to make sure that we, be a confirmation for every parent with every child, all right, and what their intent is. Then, moving on, next Monday, we have set a deadline to have all of our staff that had been previously given accommodations to work from home during this distance learning mode, that they must return to the buildings, okay? And they're working with our human resources department. This communication went out a week ago after the board meeting last week and they're all very aware of that. And our human resources staff is currently working very hard with our employees. We originally had about 220 employees that were on some type of an accommodation for childcare, for healthcare reasons, or healthcare of a family member. As of just a few days ago, we were down to around 40 that have been unresolved. And so when I say that, some of the staff members have applied for F in L.A., long-term absence. And any of those vacancies that occur because of this request for them to be in the buildings, then we're going to have to hire that position. We're going to have to figure it out, okay? And the principals are prepared to do that. It will take some time to interview, hire, select. They're already aware of some circumstances, they're moving forward, but we have put that deadline in place for the staff to notify us of their intentions. And again, we appreciate their cooperation. A lot of them have already started it. It's not like they're waiting till then, but that's the deadline, where we expect all staff members to be in the school at that time. So that will impact that one metric that is still a concern with the certified staffing and that will obviously have a huge impact on that particular metric at that time. So then at the board meeting on the sixth, we will update the board on the current stats of the metrics, the hybrid plan, what our student council are looking like, all of the above. In other words, basically what issues are remaining, what issues have to be resolved prior to implementing the plan. And to prepare for the plan, we had moved up the timeline to start on the first day of the second quarter of the academic year, which is Monday, October 19. For a lot of reasons, it seemed like the appropriate time. Now, elementary's and trimesters, it isn't really the, you know, a relevant term, but for secondary, it is a relevant timeframe in the academic calendar. So therefore, that's why that date was originally selected in the first place, if you remember back in the summer when we had this conversation. Then we would make the transition that we, after reviewing this with staff, we absolutely believe we can do that. And a couple other bullet items on this revised timeline shows that we would have a staff development day to specifically prepare for this hybrid transition on Wednesday, October 14. That would be that second planning of the five days that we're allowed. Again, we're going to use these carefully, but this is a major pivot for our staff and the teachers need to be able to plan and work together to start on that Monday in a completely different mode, something they have never done before, okay? And so we need that time to be able to give them professional development day, work with principals, work with each other and be able to prepare for that transition. And then we would go ahead with the parent teacher conferences at plan, that's the 15th and 16th. So it'll be a non-attendance day on that 14th and the 15th and 16th are already non-attendance days because those are parent conference days in our calendar like they are every year, okay? One footnote on that Wednesday, it is the PSAT testing at Barrington High School. So we will have students in the building that day, take, just those students who have lined up to take that assessment. It's National Testing Day, we don't have a choice on it, that's when it is. And so we will continue with that. The good news is the high school, actually in the typical parent conference time this time of year, they actually have a half-day of professional development. Is it Steven on Thursday or Friday? Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Thursday's a holiday for us.
So they will use obviously that day to make up the time when they've got the testing going on in the building on that Wednesday and use that time effectively for that purpose. So we're, we're okay to be able to give the appropriate time at the high school level as well. And then finally, the launch date for the hybrid, if the metrics are all where they currently are today or where anticipation being, you know, at that time, we would start, effectively start at all levels, the hybrid planned on October 19. Before I have each principal talk about the level, is there any questions about the timeline? There may be some at the end after you hear about the levels, but I didn't know if there's any I didn't cover here clearly.
Questions ready?
Okay. I can just say, we have condensed it. We are tight to be able to make this happen. I am confident we can make it happen appropriately. But there's reasons why we have, you know, that timeline. Every, so thank you, I appreciate you. You may have questions about it after we talk through some of the sort of stuff and I understand. All right, I am going to turn over to Steve McWilliams and let him talk initially about the high school plan. Now, the high school and the middle school plans are virtually identical, but there will be a few little differences that I think Travis will jump in on, but I'll let Steve start and Travis will follow.
So good afternoon, everybody. To start off with, I want to outline a few of the metrics that were used to develop our plan. So last Tuesday night, we talked a little bit about the hybrid plan and I said that we were looking at 100% capacity. So if 100% of our students were to come back, these are the thoughts that we're looking at. What we have done is we've taken a look at the data from the summer and we are hypothesizing a level of students coming back. We're setting a level at 80% and at 80%, we think that we're able to function in this plan. If we have 90% of our students that want to come back to the high school, we may have to make some adjustments. I want to just set that expectation clear, that this is based on 20% of our students saying, and families saying, I want to be in distance learning, and 80% saying that they want to come back. Here is the reason for that. Our classrooms must maintain six feet of social distancing throughout the class period. In order for us to do that at the high school and the middle school for that matter, we need to have somewhere between 40 and 50% capacity. So some of our classrooms, we can only have 40% of what would be full capacity of that class and still maintain six feet of social distance between all students at all times, which is a requirement by the state board and Illinois Department of Public Health, okay? So that's what it's based on. And then the other criteria that is really important for us, because we're running a full bell schedule, is how many students can we handle for our lunch periods? So if we parse out as many spaces as possible, we need to have essentially eight spaces to be able to hit our two highest-capacity lunch periods, so that all the students have a place to eat in a socially-distanced environment that only contains 50. So we're looking at converting gyms and large spaces into essentially small cafeterias so we can divide the student population up during those lunch periods to be able to serve lunch. So that's where the A number comes from. If there's some questions at the end, I can show you the details on that. But from there, we are looking at proposing an A/B hybrid scenario or situation. So essentially, we would divide the alphabet in two halves. This division point is still a little bit up for debate as well, but it'll be likely right in the middle, LM, somewhere in that range. As we make that split, one of the things that we will do is look across the levels to try to make sure that we've got consistency amongst families. So we don't have a different split at the elementary school, the high school, and then the middle school. So they're all, we want to make sure that we can get as consistent as possible. One of the things that I would say with that, we may need to have a little bit more flexibility at some of the different buildings to make sure that happens. So in some instances, we may ask a family to shift to a different portion of the alphabet just so that we can keep the consistency amongst our grade levels. I think that's important for childcare, we think it's important for just the family continuity and transportation and those types of things. So essentially, the plan looks like this. On a typical week, we would start with Monday and Tuesday being the A attendance day. So students that choose to go into hybrid in-person learning, they would be in school on Monday and Tuesday. Students that are in the hybrid mode, letters M through Z, they would be in distance learning mode or essentially what we're doing now with Zoom sessions and some blending as well. So that depends on the course itself. And then we flip-flop at the end of the week. Wednesday, we want to keep it a blended or distance learning mode. The purpose for that is continuity, so that we've got a real set schedule for parents and families throughout the district that they know on Monday and Tuesday, these are the days that I'm going to school. On Wednesday, I'm going to be in hybrid mode, that gives us an opportunity to attend to some deep building maintenance. We're going to do that every night, no matter what, but it gives us a little bit more of an opportunity. And then we bring in a new cohort of students on Thursday and Friday. That's the rationale behind that. Essentially, we want to run the same bell schedule, same length of class period and that's essentially the nuts and bolts of the plan.
I think another key piece with that split and that Wednesday is to minimize the contact tracing in case we have positives. We probably will have positives. Every school that's open has had positives. So what we're trying to do in this large environment, like at Barrington High School, is if we have a positive situation, it minimizes the quarantine scenarios and contact tracing situations. If we block them, you know, like this, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, then that's what you'll see, you know, what a lot of schools have done. And it really makes a lot of sense, given the expectations. If we never have a positive, then, you know, but we're preparing the court and anticipating that might, may happen, okay? And then we'll have to follow up.
So it goes maybe without saying that there would be deep cleaning on Saturday or Sunday as well?
Absolutely, seven weekends. That's, yeah, correct, yes. This is just during the week, right?
Can we have questions now, or do you want us to wait until the very end?
You know, specific for high school, you know?
If they're specific for high school, or wait?
Yeah, for high school, that's fine.
So are you staggering the bell at all for classes to minimize the number of kids that are in the hallway at the same time?
So we, we're not sure that we're gonna need to do that. We had to do that with the plan over the summer where we got 80% of the student population in at once. We feel as though, based on the size of the halls, and we got the hallways really mapped out so that they're one-way hallways and managing the intersections. So I don't think that we're going to have to do that. We'll have to play it by ear. We did have a big test yesterday, and we've got a couple of other activities that are going on during the next few weeks where we can take a look at movement patterns. I think at this point, we're feeling as though supervision is probably enough to be able to manage this, making sure that students aren't stopping and congregating in the areas where they would typically stop and congregate. Essentially, we're trying to minimize extended contact within that six-foot radius where you would see that in a classroom. So passing in the hallway is not as critical as being next to somebody, right next to somebody for an extended period of time. That's not to say that we need to have significant supervision to make sure that students are taking care of masks, hand hygiene, you know, bathrooming is gonna be another situation where we're gonna have to be a little bit more regimented on that so that students may not be able to do that during passing periods. We'll have to do that during class periods so that we can limit the number of students that are in a small confined space and be able to supervise it a little bit. But at this point, we're feeling fairly comfortable with that, but we'll spend some time analyzing that over the next couple of weeks as we have larger groups of students in the building to see if there's any concerns about that.
Got it, got it. And then, I'm only asking because I know that parents will ask this too. I'm sure that you guys looked at block scheduling as an option to kind of keep kids, like, you know, in a classroom a little bit longer at each time. What were the, I mean, were there some detriments to that? Or, you know, what was the, what kind of led the decision to follow the standard bell schedule?
So the block schedule is much more complicated than just, "I'm in this class period at this time." So we tried to experience or we tried to experiment with that a little bit last year during our distance learning mode. What we found is we were losing some of our time to do related services with special services. We've got a number of co-talk classes where that was creating some issues. And the other piece that we ran into is just having a level of continuity as we shift. So we did discuss that at great length over the summer, and there were a lot of hurdles to get over. And given the complexity of this issue, the thought was, let's stick to a simple solution and let's focus on staying within the parameters that we know well. Teaching on a block schedule is different from teaching in a regular 47-minute class period as well. So you have to adjust things. So we would be adjusting to not only a hybrid instructional model, but we'd also be adjusting to a hybrid in a block model, which is different for teachers as well. So for that matter, for those reasons, we just wanted to keep as simple a solution as we could for this complex problem. We could certainly look at that as we get past this three-week threshold, get things up and running, and maybe that's an option that we could look at for second semester. But the turnaround is just way too quick to be able to do that.
I think some sense of normalcy too resonates with people. And the other thing is the long-term view here. And I think that's more of a middle school response, Travis, I'm jumping in here. You know, while we're pivoting in the middle school model from what we're currently doing, is just hoping at some point, we'll be able to, you know, have more and have more of a normal scenario sometimes, which will, right? So I think there's some long-term view at this, so if that makes sense.
Okay.
Can I?
Okay. I just have one more. So on the days that, you know, the other cohort is learning from home, how do you, like, what will the technology be like? Because I'm sure it's gonna be much different for kids that are, you know, watching Zoom meetings and now their instructor is wearing a mask versus, you know, I mean, we've all, I think, learned that we read lips a lot more than we thought that we did. So what will the technology look like as far as, you know, videoing them? And like, will there be participation from kids that are learning from home on those days? How does, how do you envision that?
So we talked about this a little bit at the board meeting, but using you as an example, let's say that you were the teacher in the classroom, and the screen behind you is essentially your screen that's facing out to the classroom that's behind me. The entry-level point to this level or this type of instruction is essentially that you have your Zoom classroom on the screen behind, and you are teaching through the Zoom classroom to the students. And that would be in the direct instruction or mini lesson perspective. And then there's times in any classroom, whether it's in-person or hybrid or distance learning, where students are breaking into small groups. That might be a time where maybe the students in the classroom break into small groups, and the students in the Zoom session are put in to break out rooms. And in those instances, the teachers work through and go from group to group and check in and do work that way. In some instances, it might make sense for a student that is in that synchronous mode away from, not live instruction, it might make sense for that teacher to group those students into some kind of a blended activity that builds for the next time that they're in class. So there are many different avenues to be able to do instruction. We've got a couple of examples of that going on right now, where Brandon Pemberton is doing it with a couple of his choirs, where he's got small groups in that are singing, and the rest of the class is participating in a synchronous model. So we're gonna work on those, but a lot of that is the professional development that leads up to it. And that's why those days just before the kickoff of the hybrid plan are so important.
But when the kids are in school, like, okay, if this is, I'm gonna pretend I'm a teacher, and these are my students, and then I've got this here, right? Like this of every sitting here? And then, but I'll be talking to the class, right? Because I think that there's, I think after the last board meeting, there was some confusion, like, you know, is it gonna be, the teacher is doing this, and then, you know, the class is kind of?
Yeah, I would hope not that it's not this, but yeah.
Right, right, okay. So, but then the Zoom will be displayed?
That's an A model of how to do it. There are other models, but that's just an example of, I think, of an entry-level point to do that. But there are definitely different modifications or different iterations that you can utilize.
Thank you.
So I just wanted a comment, I wanted your comment. I'm not looking to micromanage, but there's a couple other municipal districts that are limiting lunch, having half the class come in the morning, the other half come in the afternoon, or maybe two days, one in the morning, two days in the afternoon, and getting rid of lunch, which was, sounds like a huge obstacle that you're working on. So I'm just wondering if you could comment if that was thought of and why you ruled that possibility out.
So I'd have to look at their specific plans. I have heard of or looked at some of the plans in the area. I will tell you that in those plans, the sacrifice of instructional time to being in-person is significant. So I'm thinking of one particular district where class periods were cut to approximately 30 or 35 minutes. So that's a significant loss of instruction time. So we're trying to balance both of those pieces. So I feel like we can get really close, based on what we learned this summer, to meeting the needs or the requests of students and maintaining the same level of instructional time that you would get if you were on a half-day plan. So if you do the math on it, if you're there in the morning all week, it's essentially an equivalent of two days minus our Wednesday. If you're there in the afternoon, it's the equivalent of two days minus the Wednesday as well. So we've got the contact piece that's in there. It does give some flexibility for teachers to do, like labs and science, where you've got those longer lengths of period. And we've done quite a bit of training and work with our staff in terms of using blended experiences where they divide classes up like this already. So, and we've been doing that for several years now. So not all of our teachers, but a lot are comfortable in that, and we've got an opportunity to expand, so.
Barry, I think too, the instructional piece that Steve's talking about is absolutely, we weren't willing to sacrifice the instructional time. Done. And the other piece is transportation. We, as you as a board know, it's huge. It's a huge, I mean, we just operationally could not flip that district-wide, you know, and midday. Now, when we get to the elementary, you're gonna see. Elementary, we're gonna be able to do it. We could not do all three levels. We just don't have the equipment, we don't have the drivers, we don't have the time. It just flat-out would not work.
That's one that's kind of your comment on that.
So that's it. And but instructionally was the driver here, to Steve's point. But I just wanted to know, this transportation issue was secondary, is what I would say. But it was a problem. It was, I mean, it was, I don't know what was gonna happen, so.
I also think, Brian, what you said earlier about the continuity of keeping these cohorts of kids together. You know, if you're flipping like that, then you've got the cleaning problem in the middle too.
Middle of the day. And it just, and that's, that's, yeah. So there's a lot, and thanks for bringing up the cleaning piece, that's right, I forgot about that.
Building a teacher lunch breaks, and it seems simple, but that schedule is so complicated, so complex. It's been built over years and years and years and years, the master schedule. There's a reason why it takes a lot to shift away from it, particularly in large institutions like ours. It's, there's a reason why most of our cohorts follow that and haven't drifted to a modified block or a block. It's just with the volume and the complexity of our schedule, it makes it pretty difficult.
Leah, did you have a question? I do wanna get to the other levels.
Good point. What changed since the summer to make lunch possible? Were there building walls, or what happened in periods? Because lunch was one of the hang-ups. Lunchtime is one of the roadblocks for going back to school this summer.
The difference is just volume. So in the summer, if you remember, our focus was everybody coming back, right? So now we're looking at an A/B hybrid where we're splitting what our needs are in half. So as it is right now, like, I think I mentioned this, we need approximately eight spaces that hold 50 students to be able to accommodate lunch, fifth hour and fourth hour during those two periods. It isn't quite as difficult the other parts of the day. Now, it doesn't seem like a lot, but that's just about every gym except for the main gym, the cafeteria, all of our common spaces. So we can do it, but we're right on the edge there. So I'm just trying to say, you know, comfortably we can get there. And that, once we get over that during the summer too, the six-feet piece, the six-foot of social distancing was different. It was six feet when possible, but, and Brian can touch on it a little bit, but the health department has told us that six feet means six feet. It's not, you can bring your desks closer. You need to keep them six feet apart in the classroom. That's what the requirement is. The when possible is, you know, in passing periods or, you know, there are gonna be times when people pass within six feet, but that's the driving measure right there. And then our classroom numbers just won't hold more than that 40% in many of our classrooms.
We're also gonna have outside opportunities when the weather's appropriate or intense. I mean, we're looking at spreading out about every possible scenario.
And Leah, they changed the guidelines for that as well. It used to be that you had to have that egress coming in. You couldn't divide the rooms like we're talking about. They weren't letting you do that. They've changed that since the summer as well.
They eased up on it as far as the, how should I say this? The enforcement, I'm sleeping at that, okay?
Well, these are things that can be done, I understand.
Yeah, so for instance, we couldn't use the curtains to divide the gym up until now. We can divide the gym up in person.
That, that is a, that is a enforcement change that I specifically talked with the Lake County Health Department about.
And if you've been in our gym, most, I can't speak for the others, ours go floor to ceiling. But we couldn't count that, which was frustrating, but now we've got the ability to.
They did not change, it's not written anywhere. I'm telling you, it's an enforcement issue. It was, as long as we're making that conscious effort to divide them and keep the six feet, that's non-negotiable. The six feet's non-negotiable.
That's really good to know. I was wondering about both of those, lunch and gym, but really quick question. Teaching piece. It's more relevant to e-learning. The ability, what guidance are we giving the teachers as regard to checking in with students? I don't know if it's grade level specific or not, but I know some students are not comfortable putting their picture on the screen when they're in Zoom class. Others just don't feel like it. So my concern is that even when we're in hybrid mode, now the teacher's gonna be dealing with kids in the class and on the screen. What kind of guidance are we giving or ability to check in with kids who are on their screens that they can't see?
So the direction that I've shared with our staff multiple times is, you as a teacher have the opportunity to require that student to turn on their camera. And in some instances, they do that. However, there are instances where maybe a student isn't comfortable, there's an issue going on. So I would encourage your students, share that with them, that if there are issues, that please email them with, to me, and share those issues. And then, you know, as a staff member, as a teacher, have some, consider that, you know? So maybe there is a student that isn't feeling well, or that there's something going on in their house that they're not comfortable with. If they can share that with the teachers so that the teacher's aware of that. So, you know, teachers are getting more comfortable with it as well in terms of, you know, using a little bit more of a Socratic method and asking the students questions through Zoom and making sure that they're staying focused. But there is that careful balance of, you know, social and emotional, and here's a requirement, you must, you know? So we're trying to balance those needs because there are needs out there. And the last thing we wanna do is have a student is in a situation where they're, they've got some anxiety, and requiring them to have the picture on pushes them to a situation where, you know what, if my choice is to have my picture on or not go to class, I'm gonna choose not to go to class, so.
And I'm not suggesting it's a requirement at all, but I think if you've got a student who's not willing, there must be a way to connect with that student just to make sure they don't fall through the cracks. Should we make sure that we're?
They should be doing that.
Would it be okay if we were to move out to the middle school just so we can get everything in? Thank you.
Hey Travis, now, as Travis comes up, the middle school daily schedule is essentially the same. Travis, I thought it might be helpful for you to also comment about our calendar down there at the bottom of this document as well. And that would be the same for everybody.
Yeah, I hate to say Steve stole my thunder, but the good thing is six through 12, we are on the same plan. So everything that Steve shared is the same for the middle schools. Where we're looking at, when we made our model, 20% of our students at least staying home do that. If it's higher than that, we will have to redefine some things and look at some other avenues to take to try to accomplish what we're doing. But we're still doing the A/B day, as Steve mentioned, and doing those things.
And this is a pivot for middle school from the current structure.
Big pivot from where we were at. But the thing we're excited most about is going to a normal schedule. To Brian's point, we need normalcy back as soon as we can get it. And while I know it isn't at the level of what we would all love to be in, having our kids come into a normal schedule, as well as our teachers operating as they had normally in the years past, we believe will provide some continuity and some clarity for our students and our staff. With that being said, we have a similar issue with our lunches, as Steve does. We don't need eight spaces, but at both middle schools, we need at least three large spaces to move our kids into. Both Jim and I believe that we've figured that out, and we have a working plan as to how to do that. In those lunchrooms, the way we'll operate specifically is, we'll no longer be utilizing lunch tables. We'll have individual desks so we can make sure that our kids are at least six feet apart and that they stay within that area. And one of the things that we communicated out during that time is, we'll make sure to be mindful that the students know that that's their area that they, because normally at a middle school, I'm sure at every school, lunch is more of a social dynamic, and that's not going to be the case in the beginning of this right now. While we're gonna create a safe environment for them. While we're gonna create a safe environment for them, we're gonna make sure that they are socially distant and in an appropriate setting. But that's how we're running our main schedule. It's going to be as it has been in the past at both campuses. The calendar that we talked about, as Brian had mentioned, is we have figured it out with our A/B days. As Steve had mentioned, our A days will be Monday and Tuesdays, continuity and two days in a row. Wednesday will be the all remote learning. And then, on Thursday and Friday will be the B days. So, two in a row is, this takes us all the way up until winter break. And what we have on that is we have an equivalent of 18 days in both, the A and the B, which we felt was a really good start for when we split up our calendar like that. The one thing we worry about is always how equal are the days going to be? So, we were happy with where this sat. What we did do, just for the board's information, is the two days prior to Thanksgiving break is a Monday, Tuesday. So, we had Monday stay as an A day and Tuesday will be a B day. So, that is a little modification we'll communicate to our community about. And we did the same thing with the two days prior to winter break, a Monday, Tuesday. So, that's how we got to 18 days at each level with that.
And the election day.
Yeah.
The day off.
Yeah, that was a, yeah, that was.
That was an odd ball too.
Yeah, so we will communicate on that Tuesday that's off, we will shift our B day to the Wednesday and we'll make sure we communicate to our community about that modification as well. But those are the three biggest bumps, if you, if you will, in the calendar that we utilized and how we manipulated it to get to, to even 18 days.
Will that still allow, since you've got days back to back, Leah, do cleaning, that typically is done on Wednesday?
Yep, we'll do it on that Tuesday for sure.
At Monday night.
Yeah, and it's done every night, every night anyway. That Wednesday gives us a little bit more, more time and, and less congestion to worry about to do that as well. So, with that being said, both middle schools are looking at our classrooms. So, one of the biggest impacts for us was our lunch, but it was also the classrooms. How many students are we fitting into our classrooms? So, we are at 12 is where we're at, at a middle school right now. We feel 12 people in that environment, we can provide that with six feet social distancing. Now, please keep in mind, that doesn't speak to all of our classrooms because some of them are smaller. You know, we have some other smaller classrooms, so we still go by six foot social distancing. But our, majority of our classrooms, we're operating on a size of 12 students in the classroom. With this model, when we look at it, as Stephen mentioned too, we wanna make sure that we're mindful that when we break it down to get our 50% of our students in for our A days and our B days, this may mean to even some things out within our calendar, within our alphabet, we may have to modify some student schedules. So, for example, right now, when I'm looking at a blueprint of something I've ran already, I may have some classes already sitting at 12 where another one across the hall is at 5 and for first period. So, at that point in time, when we get the list of those that have completed the survey and we have the details of who's coming, we'll be able to run a new schedule to look at the numbers. And then, at that point, we may have to modify student schedules to make sure.
Maybe a couple of kids if it makes sense. Now, that'll be situational and principals will have to navigate that. But it will be the clearly exception, not the norm.
Correct. We'll only do it if we're obviously over 12. We'll make sure the six feet social distancing in the classroom is our driver. And then, then we'll make those modifications.
We may have been asking somebody to move to the other day too.
Right.
We may ask them to move to the B group or the A group or, you know, to balance it out.
Yeah, what's challenging is if you look at the alphabet right now, like for Prairie's perspective, you can look at the Monday, Tuesday is 452 students. And then, the Thursday, Friday is 369. So, but for Jim at station, it's the exact opposite. So, we'll know more as to specific numbers after the questionnaire. I should say not survey, the questionnaire is completed. So, then we'll have a better exact breakdown of where we're at. But we are excited to get to a level of normalcy. The one thing I do wanna say in this is Angela asked a good question about how the, what's the classroom gonna look like and how are the teachers gonna do it? Our teachers in this district are rock stars. They've really done a great job of managing the situations they're in. They're now gonna move into the dynamic of what, what some college and universities are referring to as concurrent teaching, where it's having the kids in the classroom with them while the other half of the kids are at home on Zoom and how that's gonna look. And Steve mentioned it, but on the 14th of October, we will be working with them to work on that concurrent teaching strategy and more tips and strategies on how they can be successful with our students. And where we may start a little bit on, on shaky ground in a sense of how this works with the technology, what I do know about our teachers is they rise to the challenge. So, we will grow through this and improve over time.
If I could just add to that, I know that our instructional coaches right now, they may even have a meeting right now that, now shaking his head, yes, yes. So, they are working on this right now and we're not gonna, we're not gonna wait till the 14th. Till then, alright, this is the concurrent way of doing this. We're going, I mean, our teachers are getting information daily on this now, getting ready for the 19th.
So, I had a, I'll roll up a question Travis. So, you had mentioned that deep cleaning will take place every evening. So, was there any thought process about having group A go to school on Wednesday one week and then group B go on the following week? And why not try to get kids back in the school as often as possible?
We, we did talk about that Gavin. So, when we talked about that, we thought from a K through 12 standpoint, you know, to try to stay in line with what even the elementary, you'll see what the elementary's doing next. At that point, we're all on that plan for Wednesday for the blended learning remote, knowing that if we did a shift like that and if the elementary hadn't, we could have some supervision scenarios at homes and things of that that our families, you know, look, look to. But we did engage in that conversation as something as we progressed down the road, if that's something we need to do, it's a thought that we could look at.
The, the concern about contact tracing too was another one. When they're, because if we do end up with a positive, we're gonna need some time at the end of the week or middle of the week or at the beginning of the week. It was a major concern when I have talked to other districts, when they have jumped into this, if they, they needed a transition day. Some districts are doing it at other days of the week. Wednesday was the obvious day for us. It's the shortest instructional day and so that's, and it was also the appropriate transition. Is it something that we might consider, you know, moving forward? Sure, but to start with, we, we felt like this was a better place to start. I mean, there's no doubt, we did talk about it.
I have a group of middle school principals that Jim and I, we Zoom with, we, we talk to all the time, try to figure out who's doing what, how's it working. And my conversation, Lake Zurich is trying something like that, exactly. And in speaking with their principal, there are many challenges that have come with it. So, that was one of the things through our conversation point where we landed there based on where Brian had sent to.
And it's gonna be interesting, obviously, we, we hear about challenges, but we also know a lot of challenges with kids being at home. So, just understanding those and being able to kind of weigh the risk, if you will, would be helpful just from a board member, but from a parent's perspective as well.
I, I come to you as a parent of a sixth grader at my home who is fully remote as well. So, I, I live all your lives and my wife is a board member as well, so I get it on both ends.
Lucky you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Travis?
No, I was gonna say the same thing.
Can we come back to middle school? We need to. Alright, elementary, others?
Alright, I'm going Vod Tech, I printed out my notes. I've written from you, Jim. So reliable. Um, so I'm just gonna share kind of an overview of our plan and also how we got to the point we were. Our elementary leadership team talked about great lengths that really like what we were hoping to accomplish and what we wanted out of the hybrid plan. So, our goal was to have the students working with the teachers as much as possible, whether it was in-person instruction or synchronous day. Um, we also thought consistency of schedules for families was really important because of childcare issues and for daycare that many times you have to have set days of what's gonna happen and who's gonna be taking care of the kids. So, we also knew we had to work within the parameters of the CDC, the IDPH and ISB to have the socially distanced classrooms, which is what we were working on in summer to figure out how many desks we could safely fit in a classroom. Most classrooms are around 12 or 13. And then, we had to figure out the proper, proper social distancing measures for the common areas, arrival and dismissal, and look at all of those components as well, especially for supervision of the young children. Also knowing that kids are gonna be really excited to see each other. We have the playgrounds outside, we would want to avoid some of that. So, how we can adequately do this to ensure the safety of our little kids. So, we came up with what we call the alternating hybrid model. So, all students can receive synchronous core literacy and math instruction from their teachers each and every day, either in person or via Zoom. And I'll get to that a little bit about how it flips. We feel that the in-person instruction or the synchronous remote instruction is essential for our primary students, especially those in grades eight and three because that's where they're building their foundational skills. We learned a lot from the spring in terms of what was working and what wasn't working. And we also know that the immediate feedback from the teachers, the strategies for how to proceed with some of that instruction and the interventions that they can provide on the spot are absolutely essential as we try to move the kids through our top learning standards. Um, we also know that we have tried some of that simultaneous or concurrent instruction that was mentioned before. And based on the age of elementary students, it's a little bit more challenging because they do need more direct instruction from the teachers. They need more feedback. A lot of times they're going into breakout rooms. So, we felt once again that with the model that we came up with for the alternating hybrid of students coming in person for half of the day and then the other group having the synchronous core instruction with their teachers in the other half of the day was gonna be the best way to kind of meet both of those worlds in the middle. We also thought it was really important for kids to have consistency with the amount of time that was being dedicated toward the core instruction. So, we felt that 2.5 hours for the students that were in person for the core instruction was also going to be important to mimic in the afternoon. So, the students that are working synchronously with their teacher are also getting 2.5 hours of core instruction in literacy and math. Um, so with our model, students either become an A learner or a B learner if they're choosing in-person instruction. And then, we'll get to the remote learners a little bit later because I know we're gonna have some of those. So, this is where it gets a little confusing, but the chart, everything really kind of plays it out. If you were to be a student who's in the A group, they would go to school for 2.5 hours on Mondays and Tuesdays for their in-person core instruction, which is gonna be focused on math and literacy. After their lunch break, they're gonna go home and engage in asynchronous learning, which is gonna be social global studies, science, and then some more independent literacy work. And then, they'll also have their specials, which could be asynchronous or synchronous, just depending on the day. Um, on Thursdays and Fridays, that group then begins their day with their at-home asynchronous instruction, which is what they had at home on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then, their afternoon becomes their synchronous instruction with their teacher to get the core literacy and core math instruction. Group B is really the reverse of that. They start their week doing the asynchronous instruction and having their specials in the morning on Monday and Tuesday. But then, they have their synchronous instruction for the core math and literacy with their teacher in the afternoon for the 2.5 hours. And then, they come in person. So, they have their core instruction on Thursday and Friday and then they have the asynchronous in the afternoon. We have the same concept really for the Wednesdays to be the deep cleaning. We also felt it was important at this age because the homeroom assignment is so important as kids come back to school of who's in their class, for the whole group to have that synchronous instruction time for the SEL to have classroom meetings and then to be able to review, do the breakout groups and some of the learning with kids that they may not get to see because that's not the day that those kids go to school with them. Um, trying to think what else on the high level. Remote learners will have synchronous activities with teachers for the core subjects on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. So, they're gonna get synchronous core instruction four days a week as everyone else does. Theirs will be in the afternoon with the teachers. And then, they would engage with the students on Fridays, as every, uh, Wednesdays, I'm sorry, as everyone else does for that morning part with the teacher. And that would be the literacy, the math, I mean, it could be social global studies or science, kind of whatever the teacher feels is important for that day to do with the whole class. Kindergarten, we're using really the half-day model for that. Group A would have in-person instruction once again for the core subjects, which would be literacy, math. And that would also include social global studies and science on Monday and Tuesday in the morning. But since it's a half-day model, then they would be done. And then, on, in the afternoon, the B group would get their core instruction synchronously with the teachers. And then, once again, it flips for the B group. We also felt that we had a really good learning plan remotely that we launched in the fall so that we were to return to remote learning as metrics would change, we would revert to our current hybrid system. We also feel that this system allows for the kids to continue to build up their independence, having some asynchronous instruction at home and still using Zoom and learning some of those features and working at some of the activities autonomously while coming in and kind of building up their stamina and getting back to school as well. So, that's the short version of our lunch plan.
That's a high level. What questions? I think the major difference in elementary, obviously, is they have the same teacher all day long. So, we had to take a different approach than when the, in the six, 12 where you've got multiple teachers throughout the day. So, we had to figure out a way to balance the key, the literacy and the math and then, and then work in the specials components in, in the opposite of that. So, this allows for that model. So, every kid goes to school two days a week for that key instruction and then the balance of the time there. We avoided lunch here at, at this level. Keeping elementary kids six feet apart.
And off the playgrounds, honestly. The resales part was.
Major, major challenge. And so, that was another piece of the thinking here.
So, you're a, a working, two working parents. You know, this is kind of, I, I think, I think the model's great, but I mean, part of the, you know, kind of the ideal was to be able to give parents the ability to get back to work. And this plan really doesn't do that. Would that be an accurate statement? Unless you can do your job for two and a half hours a day, which I don't, don't think most people can.
Trying to get people back to work went on the top of our list. I mean, I'll be very honest. I mean, is it something to the community? Sure, but, but meaning the academic and social emotional needs of the kids, that was the top of our list. Okay? I'm not saying it wasn't a factor.
We, we looked at that and we thought one option would be to have the kids in for the full day. Because of the fact that we can bring about half of the class back though, then it would be possibly that that whole other group of students would have to participate in asynchronous instruction for the entire day without having contact with their teacher. We felt that that was a little bit disjointed because the synchronous time with the teacher is so important to have consistency for that. Our elementary teachers are using breakout rooms all the time. They're using one-on-one time and they're having office hours. So, the concurrent simultaneous instruction for elementary is very hard because of their age. They're not as independent, they can't problem solve as much. And the teachers aren't able to give the same type of feedback as they are over Zoom with the synchronous instruction with those smaller groups. So, the, if we did that, a teacher would then really have to possibly not be able to engage synchronously with their students for one full day while they have that group in front of them to do all of the in-person learning. So, that was one of the reasons why we landed on this model more, to be able to really touch each student every day with synchronous instruction for the core.
So, I heard kindergarten would be third grade. Was there any thought process of having a different plan K through third and fourth and fifth? Or was it just, let's just get the kids back in the school? We talked about that.
We did. Once again, this is sort of our transition back into school for kids. We felt for consistency of schedules for families, it was important. A lot of them have siblings in K through three and also four through five. So, that could be a challenge for them. It is the same thing though for fourth and fifth grade students as well, that if they're going through a full asynchronous day while the teacher's doing all of the in-person instruction, that could be challenging for them.
We look at it, that, any other elementary principals want to chime in? I know Heather's sitting in the seat and done a great job.
This was a group decision and we spent many hours, I promise.
Any other comments from any, I mean, all, all the elementary principals worked on this.
I'm not sure if you stated that. Way along the parents know whether they're group A or group B.
Really, as soon as we get the survey results turned around so we can split the classes. Our priority is to keep the families together with siblings in the school as much as we can. And we also have to look at EL students, students with IEPs and extended students, and then try to work as much as we can with the secondary level.
Was there any thought given to, or any research done on actually having a morning group and an afternoon group, say group A coming in the morning and then, you know, running the buses, switching, going home?
We did. We're looking kind of at what we have right now to work with in terms of transportation. If another group comes in in the afternoon, there's the cleaning issue in the middle of the day, the contact tracing, and then that second round of transportation. the contact tracing, and then that second round of transportation. Definitely something we want to consider in the future too. This was kind of our first transition back once again to still get the students with synchronous instruction, whether in person or remotely for every day of the week.
I, I just want to be clear, I, no criticism implied, but one teacher is gonna take half the class and teach in-person for that morning and also be responsible for the remote learning for the other half the class. And then in the afternoon, be responsible for both groups, right? So they have to kind of plan like two lesson plans for each day essentially.
Well, we are.
I'm just asking, I'm just.
Right.
I have a question. How can they be teaching in person and planning the asynchronous part in having, I suppose?
Dr. Gill's working with our coaches, and they're developing lessons. Since we're all using the same curriculum, that they would be able to use as much as they wanted to, or of course they could adjust it for their class. And that would be part of the asynchronous learning. They can also, since they'll have the students in person a couple days a week, review any of that if they need to, while they still have the students in person. And then Wednesdays, once again, is like that middle ground to go over anything that they need to. Because it's gonna be synchronous basically for most of the day until lunchtime.
So.
So that's correct.
Okay, I can just jump in a second. We talked to numerous districts, elementary districts, and many of them are either running a whole day amount, like we have taught. And they kept it in that their students are only going to get half of the year curriculum because elementary students have such a difficult time with any asynchronous learning. So their, their days, the kids who are on the B day, if the A day is in person, they are doing a full day of asynchronous learning. And they just can't do it. They're falling apart. The other model is that, you know, they're running the morning and the afternoon, which we just talked about. And so we tried to figure out how can we maintain that consistency and ensure students are getting, you know, the same curriculum for literacy and math every day with their teacher. So we have significant work that we're planning on doing to make the science and social studies classes asynchronous and age-appropriate for our advanced learners. And that's what instructional coaches, myself, will be working on in the next couple of weeks.
How, how much of the time that, like I'm looking at a Monday.
Right.
Group B in the morning, we've got the asynchronous part, but you also have specials.
Correct.
So are my specials asynchronous as well?
We're working to make those synchronous as much as we can. We haven't fully vetted that schedule just because we have shared staff across the district, so that's part of the work that we're still doing now of kind of negotiating who's got what. But we do want kids in that time, yes, to have still connections with the specials teachers.
That'll be finalized soon, but that, some of that detail, there's, we've got to.
So there, there is a possibility or likely possibility that at least for part of that time, that the student would be asynchronous.
Yes.
They might need to do PP or R2.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's our complete hope and goal, absolutely. We just honestly haven't gotten to that fine-tune detail yet, or we're.
And those specials teachers really want that time. I know they do.
Yeah.
Music teachers, the art teachers, and to be able to have face-to-face. I know I've heard that.
And it gives us a little flexibility since half of the class is in person, that we can combine the remote students to get them more synchronous, because we can take maybe the half of one class at a grade level with half of another at the grade level, and then they get the synchronous instruction. So it's not as many sections that we have to plan for because the groups are smaller.
So first of all, I want to bring up one thing. So I, I have a hard stop at 2:30, and that, that clock is very slow. Um, I didn't realize that.
Always realizing.
So we, we're, we have a five-minute time crunch right now. Um, which is unfortunate because I, you know, I've got a thousand questions. Um, you know, I think that, you know, I know you guys have been doing so much work on this. I know I am an educator. I, I think that, you know, at first glance, I, my feeling, I don't have little kids, but my feeling from reading emails and talking to my friends who do is that, you know, and, and kind of logically, these are the kids that are having the most difficult time with, with what is going on. Um, you know, learning remotely is just not really working for a kindergartner. So, you know, to, to the extent that I saw that this plan has kids in school two days a week for just two and a half hours, um, you know, my stomach dropped, I'll be honest. I mean, you know, I, I I'm like, I have to be in all the time. I think that that's, you know, probably should be our focus. I mean, I would keep my kids home if they could use more space someplace. It's just, it, it seems very concerning to me. So maybe, you know, and again, I, I know you've spent so much time on this, and here I am just sitting here just saying things and then telling you have to go, which is rude, and I apologize for that. Um, but, you know, to the extent that maybe we could look at utilizing those Wednesdays, um, you know, for more in, in-person learning, you know, I know that, that we're all trying to do the best, but, um, gosh, my heart really goes out to, you know, educators as well as the parents of, of elementary kids. Um, it's, you know, this is, it's tough. Um.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I have two young children. I was a working parent doing remote things, still doing it now.
Yeah.
It is really, really hard. And as I mentioned before, we've been looking at all of that. Our struggle is the kids that are at home then, if it's for a full day, they're missing out on that synchronous core instruction time, and that's what we're really trying to grapple with, to be honest. Like, that's like the proverbial struggle of doing what's best, because a full day of potentially like working on their own is gonna be really challenging for the kids and the families as well. But we hear what you're saying because it is really hard for the kids with the autonomy and independence.
I think that's something we absolutely could consider down the road. Have to redo this for a little bit. I, I, because I know we talked about it.
We did.
But I think it's some, you know, I don't know, elementary principals, you guys were in these conversations. Anybody else have any context for this? Yeah, John?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I agree with, with, my, my kids are currently in A, B schedule. And the, the B, they're, I'm a rich, so they're on the A. Um, the B schedule is, is very, very high. I have two elementary kids and one in middle school. And my middle schooler, even though he's in sixth grade, like Travis is, um, he's doing all right on the B days. Uh, they've, they've done a nice job on those. But the, the elementary kids on the B day, the whole day off is, is really, really challenging. And then on top of that, childcare becomes an issue too, and, and so like the pods that they're in, they're separate pods with other families. Getting them to work asynchronously for an entire day, um, they're not getting much, in my opinion. Whereas I, this, what I love about this plan instructionally is it maintains continuity of instruction. Uh, they would have that, the core, I mean, what they really need, what my, what my first grader needs is a lot of literacy and math, one-on-one attention, and this, this allows the students in Barrington, the children of Barrington, to get that on a daily basis. This is, I, I mean, nothing is ideal right now, but as good as a hybrid plan can be to maintain instruction, this is about, this is about as good as I've seen out there. It's, it's not easy on families though, I get it. I mean, I'm living it myself.
What public health criteria are they using in their equation, you know?
Uh, same ones we are. They're in Kane, I'm in Kane County. So we have a school in Kane County too.
Number of cases, the number of cases and the number of cases.
Yeah, my knowledge there.
Brian, do you have, as Megan's as well from the room, but do you have faculty volume for this? I mean, do you, are you confident that we're gonna have our 90% or whatever your metric is to make this work?
I'll make my comment, but I'm gonna feel free, anybody can jump in here, uh, because you're talking with the staff every day. Um, we, we have, we met earlier in the week with the BEA and the BSEO leadership. Uh, they did not, so they did not develop the plans, but they looked them over, they reviewed them. Uh, there's no inherent contractual issues. They have asked to be part of the details to be able to operationalize those over the next few weeks, which we absolutely need their help to make it work. Um, I would, based on the feedback I've heard, are there some concerns? Sure, as there is. It's a pivot, right? It's a major change for them. But are they ready to see kids in front of them? I think the answer is yes. Uh, principals, do you might want to jump in? Ken?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I mean, yes, I, I think people are willing to take this next step. Now, do we have some staff that are, uh, still gonna have some medical issues that we're gonna have to navigate? Yes. And unfortunately, they're gonna have to make a personal decision there, right, on what they're gonna do. We are gonna have to probably get, hire some new people here over the next few weeks, and or have subs, or be able to, uh, if we have a very specialized position, we may allow that person to work from home still, like allow issues like a language teacher at the high school level. You can't go out and find a Mandarin teacher. They're not just sitting around waiting to watch the Barrington posting, okay? It's not happening. So if, if, I use that as an example. I'm not saying it's a Mandarin teacher at the high school, all right? I'm just saying, we may have to then hire a person to sit in the room and, and work with them if we have to do. That'll be the way exception, not the norm. All right? Um, but by and large, if we have a, you know, other teachers, that's part of that HR piece that is gonna take a couple of weeks to navigate. I believe that metric's gonna be where it should be. I think it'll be there by October 5th. Yeah, I do. And, um, we have been working hard. I do want to just say, I appreciate the cooperation of both of our associations. They've been, they understand the challenges here. They've been very helpful and, and cooperative navigating these things, so. Um, but anyway, I, I hope I answered your question. Yeah.
Angela, I know you have to.
I do. What do you want me to, I, 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 the only last thing I'd say is to the extent that you can put up some sort of Q and A like we had for the referendum, where you can send in emails and someone is monitoring that and responding, I think that would be really helpful.
Maybe we'll be on that.
Because I think it's a lot of info. I might be using that. And then, um, who's gonna take notes? Uh, Janine's got it.
Janine's got it?
Yeah, perfect. I started.
So maybe.
So Samantha's also.
A fragments of notes can come together at some point.
Got it.
Samantha's also put together an FAQ, so we'll have that as well. You know, some of the questions you all asked as well as what we believe we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About that.
I have one more point, and I'm cutting, cutting the meeting off. The only thing that concerned me, that I think we might be able to do better, I mean, or probably likely think that we might be able to do better, but at the end of the timeline, you have launch hybrid plans if metrics allow. When I look at the two public health metrics we're using, I can't help but think that they're reflecting in the overall population within our zip codes. Our population is 90% students or children aged three or four to 18 or 19. And that if we could adjust our equation, factor that in, it's actually a lower risk population here in terms of potential serious harm from COVID. Also considering that the high-risk students and families have probably opted out of the in-person learning, or at this point in time, based on only data that we have, we didn't have in the spring, know how to take care of themselves and not expose themselves. So in fact, we're using criteria that doesn't really reflect our, our population, our public health population here at District 220.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. We're using the same public health criteria. I want to make sure, I, yes, we are. I mean, I.
Can you, do you want me to explain why I don't think we are?
Well, here, I'll show you the CDC. Right here, we're using the exact same things the CDC sent out on Monday. This is a new document that just came out on Monday, and they're using the exact same things as Elwin Public Health, as well as Lake County Public Health.
And what I'm proposing is that we continue to be leaders in education by using a formula that more accurately reflects our population, which is 90% lower-risk students plus the higher-risk ones that are opting out from it.
Yeah.
Compared to this data that's facing an.
Here's the other thing. I, every week I have a, uh, public health call with the Lake County Public Health. Um, and just yesterday, I had that call. Um, and, and one of the other superintendents in Lake County asked our public health officials this exact question about students. And he said of the new cases over the last three weeks, 40% have been in the age category from five to 22. 40% of the new cases. That's what he told us on the phone.
And we know that typically.
I don't know if it's in our zip code. I'm saying Lake County.
The predominance of those cases do not require hospitalization, do not lead to major death, that sort of thing, that older population is doing. So there's a little bit of.
There is a.
Etymology from our equation.
Yeah.
I guess I would answer the question differently. Do we have any flexibility in metrics?
Yeah, and, and that's why I just popped this up here. This just came out, okay? This just came out, and I found out about it on Tuesday, and we were talking about it yesterday with the Lake County Health Department. And, and our metrics, the two public health metrics line up pretty good here. However, there are some different cut points here, but they've got five columns. See that? And they've got this, you know, you can see, lowest risk, lower risk, moderate risk, higher risk.
Very difficult to see.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can send this to the board. There. Lowest risk. You know, they've got five kind of cuts where we didn't have five, right?
Right.
And so there may be a possibility to adjust ours a little bit. Um, but I want to be very careful with that, uh, and, and vet this out. So that is something I will update the board on when we get together on, if, our October 6th, okay?
Again, it only comes in here at the end where it says, launch the plan if metrics allow. Wouldn't it be too bad if we didn't have, we could have had better metrics and we didn't go ahead because we didn't have better metrics? So I'm just trying to help.
I understand. It's the last thing I want to do, right? But.
The only thing I would say, oh, is we do have those 1,200 staff members too. And we have, we're looking out for the kids, and we're also looking out for those staff members, the kids' families and the staff members' families.
So we build it in 90/10, just like our population reflects, or 88, 12%, whatever it is, in terms of number of people in the population.
The only thing I will say is all the public health websites and this one here with Northwestern Medicine, they do not break it down that way. They just don't, right now.
Exactly.
I understand your ask.
Let's do it better.
I don't know how you can.
Let's, let's look into that.
I can ask for that. I will do that. Okay, right? I will ask. But we don't have access to that type of data. That would have to come from the public health.
Well, there's been more new data and things coming. Maybe this makes sense at some point.
As we've seen, this is all evolved, right? I hear the ask, and I will try to advocate for that as I have all this stuff, you know, since we started on the.
Thank you.
So I, on the flip side, the data that I heard on the prepared warnings is that those young people infect the older people, and then the older people have more serious symptoms. So we've got everybody in our population.
But they have a choice to not come to school.
Right, but we are looking for the whole community to be safe. But the suggestion might be to, to be more transparent. Maybe we've done some of this on the website and I haven't looked. But to have a site that says, you know, this is our zip codes, and this is where we were Monday, and then the next Monday, this is where we are this Monday. And guess what? We've only had two cases in our district this week. You know, to be transparent that way, to let people know where we're at.
That's on the Northwestern Medicine site.
Okay, but to put it on ours.
I mean.
It was in the newsletter that went out.
Right, and I think it is on the website.
It is.
Yeah.
You can put in the Barrington zip code to see the new cases every day.
Right.
I mean, it's there.
Right, but I know different school districts, universities post their, their stats to their.
So are you saying I want the district to repost?
Yeah, so be.
Pull the data and then post it?
To say, look, you know what, we're hoping to open end of October. Our numbers look good. These are our zip codes. These are our metrics. We're in the zone, you know, this week. And then next week, look at, hoping to open. We're in the zone. We can be in.
That's what this is right here that I have on the screen. It's on our website.
Okay.
And we updated it Monday.
Okay.
We're planning on updating it every Monday, based on the 14-day rolling average. Okay?
So that's good, thank you.
I mean, it's, that's why I pulled this up here. Uh, I hear you. If we can continue to provide the data in a better way, then we will. We'll, we'll keep after. As you said, I couldn't even imagine three months ago providing this type of data, right? And this continues to evolve. So we've been updating this, and we'll update this every Monday. That's our plan. And, but everybody can see the daily stuff right here. I mean, I actually, I'm, I'm refreshing it. Right there's the 14-day rolling. That's today, right? It wasn't what it was Monday, but it is today, and it's still within those similar. It even shows the red and the yellow, and if it's bad, it's red, you know? So, and if you, and then the graphs are right there. It actually shows what's happening here in both of those categories. See that? It's pretty good.
So I have a couple of questions that are kind of related to what we're talking about here. So we're, if everything keeps going smoothly, we're, we're hoping to bring students back end of October 19th.
Yes.
So on October twelfth, because it seems to me that we're in kind of a week-by-week cycle, right? So on October twelfth, or what day, am I gonna know that the nineteenth is due?
Yeah, I would I would say October fifth, I mean, because we're on a two, we're on a on a two-week cycle, I mean, we'll we'll prepare. We wouldn't pivot, you know, just because of a spike or a a one-day or a two-day thing, we're looking at trends.
So I would, I think that that's confusing right now, um.
I think the October sixth meeting, it'll be clear, we're starting.
But I think we need to have a, to Leah's point a little bit, a little bit of a, you know, we're going for another week, we're going for another two weeks or whatever it is, so people can plan. Because if we know at some point, oop, things aren't going out, going very well, I would like for people to have as much time to plan as possible to react.
I anticipate us having at least a two-week notice, and I said that at the last meeting.
You did, but I just want to make sure that.
Before we would switch.
There's someplace, someplace for people to go and to say, okay, I'm doing it for two weeks, sorry. Do you know what I'm saying?
Understood, understood.
Um. Question about the metrics, okay. I, and I'm just, I had a couple of questions that have come through emails and questions as I've talked to people that I think would be helpful to have clarification on. Um, the comment was made, private schools and daycare centers and things have opened. Do they have to follow the same rules that we do? In terms of.
ISB, no.
ISB and the health department.
No, they have to follow the public health guidelines, to my knowledge, but not the ISB. You know, they're not a public school system in the state of Elwin.
So they might be wanting to buy some of the.
Maybe a little more flexibility. Here's the other thing, they can limit, you know, they have, they have much different scenario, they don't transport, they don't do any of that.
They can limit involvement.
That's right.
Okay.
I mean, they have a lot, we can't limit, we we educate whoever shows up at our doorstep, right? I mean, there's a lot of factors that play into those. Which is what they've done, heart to six is limited, they get to their cap, they're done. Daycare centers, they're done, you know, private schools, they're done, they don't transport either.
That's all I had. I had a couple of very kind of questions, so. We, if we stay a go for October nineteenth, then the calendar seemed to assume that we're going to stay in that mode, that hybrid mode for the end of this calendar year. Is that how parents should.
Minimum.
Minimum for there, and then you would reevaluate in not not.
See if we want to make.
It's in January first, but we would, we would again.
Yeah. Second semester, we might adjust some things, or we may continue it this month, right?
Right.
We, but to my point, there was a few suggestions here today, that probably makes some sense that we should vet out and consider, but. Um but I do think it would be prudent to be conservative here, my advice is, you know, what I call it here, as we start. And if we, we see we've got opportunity to maybe fill in those gaps on Wednesdays or do some of those things when, think how much has changed with just nine weeks. In knowledge and understanding and treatment and all these types of things, right? It, I think we're on a same path here over the next nine weeks.
Okay. And then, I I mean, it's a when, we have a case, whether it be a student or a staff, um we want to respect their privacy, we have to respect their privacy and things like that.
Yes. Yes.
So how will, how can parents look for communication in that regard, that comes directly from their teacher, from the principal, from, how how can they watch for that?
Anytime we have a positive case, and we've actually had a couple of them, we've had four different scenarios off the top of my head. Two involving students at the high school level and co-curricular activities, and and two involving staff members, two scenarios involving staff members. Um, we work directly with the Lake County Health Department. We have a template letter that is mandatory, goes out to all um people impacted that attend that school, right? Or to, or work in a facility as played out here in the district office. So we have to notify those people that were impacted, right?
So to that point.
So that has to happen.
To that, to that point too, the voice of the Health Department is coming through us as well.
Absolutely.
So when we, everybody has to answer a question, right? I have not been contacted by a health professional, everyone, the parents should know that that is going to come via our staff.
Our nurses are trained in contact tracing, we did that in the summertime. Um, the Johns Hopkins training, that is phenomenal, everybody's using it. And uh so our nurses will be leading that in our buildings if uh if, maybe then, we have a positive case, right? Yeah, as we break this back.
Really, a quick question on people coming into the schools. Are we going to be doing temperature checks?
No, we are doing self-certification requirements, and one of the questions on the um self-certification requirement is, you know, your fever isn't out of the norm. Now, can we, we we do have some protocols for visitors where we do the temperature checks, am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So, but students and staff will do the self-certification because they're there regularly. Any visitors to the buildings will have to go through that that protocol.
So for younger children, their parents will have to do that?
That is correct.
Daily?
Anybody who's not a student or a staff member?
And then communicate.
We certify every day.
That's right.
So yeah, daily.
And that's why we have the app, right?
Yeah, and then.
So people with the app, that were connected to infinite campus, the kids are, and the employees are. That, we're the ones using the app, which is required under the regulations.
So the parents of the younger children can use the app to check.
Their kids.
Daily.
They they log in through the infinite campus. That's correct, and certify their younger, their kindergarteners every day. They will have to do that when their kids come to school. If it doesn't happen, then we'll have employees ready at the door and we will manually do it, right? Elementary, it's more of a, gonna be more of an, well, maybe some middle school, high school stuff too. But, yeah, so we will be prepared for those that didn't do it, because they have to scan in every day if they've completed the self-certification.
Mike, each principal's gonna send a communication about the check-in procedures in the morning for the specific building, as far as driveways, door location, where staff will be located.
Yeah, I understand that we're all stretched, including the staff. I think anytime we leave something like important like that to someone outside the district, there's more of a broken error, human error. And that's my, that's my concern on this particular point.
We don't have staffing to to do that for fifteen hundred kids at Barrington High School, I mean, we just don't. It would take, it would take forty-five minutes to get them to the building. I'm just saying. That's why we have, that's why the public health officials gave us the opportunity to use the self-certification process. I understand it, I'm just saying.
Could you just comment briefly how this will impact food service and transportation with our vendors?
Yeah, Dave, I'm gonna let you chime in, I'll do the high level, if I miss something critical. Uh, transportation, we've, Dave's been dealing with them. Uh, they uh they indicated to us, they are fully prepared to launch the hybrid on October nineteenth, um and working on it. They are, they have, they're confident that they can meet these expectations. Uh, they have been, it's been difficult for vendors, both the food service and um transportation, to do these one-off situations. Because some of their employees aren't interested in working one day a week, you know, they they're, they're, they want to work five days a week. But it's been difficult here when some of these unique opportunities we've had for some of their employees to reengage. They're on unemployment, so, you know, there's, it's, you know what I mean, they have a personal decision. So anyway, bottom line on that is though, transportation should be good to go. Food service, we're working with them as well, we're gonna continue providing food service at the at the middle school, high school level, based on the plan. At the elementary level, we also will be providing the lunches uh to those students and families who qualify for them, as we've been doing. It'll be a pickup, pickup scenario. Right, Dave, did I say that all right?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, the elementary level, uh actually, really at all levels, we'll be doing for meals. Uh, Monday and Friday pickups at uh at schools and a Wednesday delivery. Uh, the delivery being similar to what we're doing today. Uh, for transportation, BTC has already started contacting their drivers that aren't already driving. They've got a little bit over a hundred drivers that are currently running routes for us right now. So they have another, I don't know, eighty or uh eighty or eighty-five to contact, uh try to bring back, so they're in the process of doing that. They continue to maintain and operate their equipment, so it's ready to go when we start up. And we're uh we're very busy, I mean, the operational side has a lot of details to it, and there's a lot of details that have to run on the academic side and building these plans. Once they're set, we can start to do the operational work to support that. And there's a very significant amount of work that happens with that, that uh some of our staff across the district and contractual contractors are are working on. So we're excited to be able to support a big-term program next month.
We have two more questions. Couple of small things, um, big thing first, thank you to all of you, I can't imagine how much work this is spent and how it's an impossible chat problem in many ways. And to also pass on to all the teachers that it's really appreciated, all they're doing, I think they're working really hard and, you know, I hear good things and I hear bad things, and I hear lots of good things. And and I know they care, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Quick questions, we didn't do the ELC, but looking at the ELC model, it's a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. And I'm wondering why that can be when in the other buildings it's better to be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday? Curious about that, and then did we talk about, or was there a possibility of having kindergarteners go in the building more? Are my two questions?
Okay, ELC, I have a three and a half, are there minute, Michelle, I can either play it right now, I can send it to the board, if you, I mean, you tell me.
Play it.
Want me to play it?
Yeah.
All right. I don't know if my sound's gonna work, we're gonna find out, okay? Hold on. Okay, let's see if it'll play. Matt, do you think I'll get sound?
My name is Michelle Costa, I'm the principal of the Early Learning Center. Um, our current population right now are students, you know, age three to five. Um, and we currently have about twenty-five students that have been in our building since August. The twenty-five students have been in our building twice a week. Um, and they have been there here for approximately an hour and a half during each session. Um, so the priorities in our plan really builds upon what we already have, just building and bringing back more students. Uh, again, our priority is always safety, keeping our students safe, keeping as much distance as possible for, you know, early childhood center. Um, and we really focus on basing in our students with IEPs first. We have approximately sixty percent of our students with IEPs at our at our center. And so we would start with bringing back these families and these students first. Um, most of the concerns that I've received from our parent community have been students that have IEPs. They would like their child in the building to receive their related service or academic support from our teachers. And so this plan focuses and starts with them. Um, there's a consistency with scheduling for our parents. A lot of our families have students that are going to daycare, going to other private um therapies. And so this plan really supports their schedule. Um, on page two of the plan, um, it states that our students in group A would come to our building on Mondays and Wednesdays, either in the morning or the afternoon. We're running a schedule in the morning and the afternoon, our students that come in the morning will be here in the building from nine to ten-thirty. At that time, we will leave, it would allow us time at the building as teachers and as historians to go and do a deep clean of those classrooms, clean all the manipulatives or books that are being used. To prepare for the afternoon session. The afternoon session is from one to two-thirty. Um, and then the students that are home, either remote, they decided they want remote instruction, or group B, they will be participating in asynchronous activities through CSO. And they will also have a daily Zoom with their teacher, focused on the learning for the day. Um, we have done this all school year, and our families really love the daily Zoom with the teacher. And then the students in group B would be in our building on Tuesdays and Thursdays, either in the morning or in the afternoon, following the same schedule of nine to ten-thirty or one to two-thirty. Um, again, this allows us time to sanitize, to clean in between sessions, um and it allows our students to have time with their teachers. Um, we begin with our students with IEPs, and then with follow-up with our students that are in preschool, um blended classrooms, they would also then return. Friday is our day to really provide support to our families. We would have asynchronous activities sent to our students through CSO. And then we will be able to hold IEP meetings, T meetings, and really provide support to our families. We're the foundation and the first school, the first teacher that a student has. And so our staff is amazing, you know, certified specialized teachers, therapists, psychs and social workers. And they provide a lot of parents of professional development, parent support. You know, our families, a lot of times are grieving because their child has a disability. And so we provide that foundational support to really help and give them ideas, parenting advice, behavior, social emotional support, all of that. And so our Fridays are really focused on that support. Again, we have been doing this since August, and this plan really expands that to support more of our families. Um, I apologize for not being able to be there, but if you have any questions, feel free to talk with Dr. Hares or Dr. Winkleman or Mrs. Jones. Or feel free at any time to reach out to me if you have any questions on our plan. Um, we've had a lot of success with our plan so far, and we're really teaching, you know, our youngest students sanitation and social distancing. And we're doing it in an easy, you know, manner, and it's going really well. So feel free to follow me on Twitter, so you can see some of the pictures that I've been putting out about what's going on in our building. Um, if you have any questions, I'm always here, you know, feel free to reach out and wish you all the best, thank you.
All right, thank you to Michelle for that. Um, and you know, she, obviously, this is a sample, by the way, of the video that all the principals are gonna do, very, something similar to that. She obviously prepared this one for the board. But um they're gonna send this out to the parents uh when we share the the details of the plan. So a little more personal explanation of what's gonna happen at each level, if that makes sense, so you saw a sample of what that's gonna look like, so.
Um, okay, trying to remind you, let's break this one one. So you, um, back in July, and then revised in August, you had that monitor document that outlined the expectations asked. Your return to school.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, will this be folded into that at some point, so parents are still aware that all of those things are still requiring?
I hadn't thought that part of it, but, I mean, they are, that return to learn plan doesn't change at all, right?
I'm just trying to connect them somehow, just so I go know that those are still expectations.
Yeah, because none of that's changed, no.
Yeah, because that speaks a little bit to people entering the building, things like that, right?
So that's something we can re, we can add.
Yeah, we, we have it all on the website, some of it I took down for now because most of the kids are in school, but I'm working right now, but we'll have it all updated.
Yeah, and we can remind them that all of these guidelines still exist, they haven't changed.
Uh, and then your um Zoom webinar, is that going to be similar to what you did back in August about going to Auburn while learning?
Yes. And all, and all the principals are, have got the opportunity to be there this time. So, so in case we get a question about countryside, Dr. Corbin's gonna get that one, all right?
Happy to help.
Yeah, so um as, you know, we'll have them all on, so it'll be a little bigger panel than what we had before, but um yes, same format. We'll, we'll do Q and A, people can type questions in the chat box. It will not be viewable by the entire public, it's a webinar format. And um I think Matt, what is it, three thousand people can attend?
Three thousand.
So, which was sufficient before.
I was just gonna kind of, uh, I wanted to make, I guess, the last thing, what what can parents do? Do they think they can watch for the parent response, they can prepare to go hybrid on October nineteenth? But can we like summarize that and while we're either in that that call, or how should people leave this meeting?
We are going to send that out as part of the communication, right, Samantha, I'd like to send that out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're, I'm getting ready, kind of a bullet list for all of you to know exactly like what the next steps are, the timeline and everything.
Correct. The things that then will be happening, the self-certification app's gonna be another one, principals are gonna be communicating weekly here on how to prepare it everywhere. Looks different at each level. There's a few things in this district, but really it's kind of very simple level, depending on the kids and the responsibility.
Is it up to the parent to reach out to each of the levels of school, if somebody in middle school, elementary and high school, do they reach out to coordinate so they're all, their days work out? Or will the principals help with that, or for somebody who has somebody at three levels and wants to coordinate, how would they do that?
They'd have to contact, yeah, I mean, I think make it awareness with the principals, right? We did talk about that as a K-12 group, and I know the principals are prepared, a couple of people mentioned it here. Where we would coordinate if there's a family that's different in an AP thing, that we can, because I know sometimes older siblings are expected to watch younger siblings for working parents, right? So we, we're being very conscious of that, we may switch a kid if it makes more sense, you know, for that family.
So they could request that maybe through an email and put them in touch with, right, their principal or something to come.
Principal at that level who, where they want to see a, maybe a. Principal at that level who, where they want to see a, maybe an adjustment.
It might be important to, to include that when, I, because it's at a tier that each, each family will be contacted by your own principal. Just so the communication, so people know where, where to go.
Yeah, the billing level's the place.
That's a great Q and A.
Thank you.
Well, I'll reiterate what Leah said, thank you to all of you. Take a big part of your day, and I know you're very busy, so thank you for all coming and your hard work on this. And I would just say that we're grateful that we were able to condense the schedule a little bit and we're here to help if there's anything that we can do for our seats, but keep us posted, and, you know, like you said, you got to be back here, so if, if at some point something needs to change, please get back to us.
When we meet on the sixth, I'll certainly have an update on, on all of this we discussed today, right? Is there any concerns about this timeline, does it make sense to everybody? I, I know I said that hour and a half, almost two hours ago. I just was curious if there was any concerns with the timeline. We obviously convinced it, it is tight, you know, to be able to get done what we need to do to launch on the ninth day.
I think it's consistent with, you know, on August eleventh, you said that this was for the first quarter. And this is consistent with that, and I guess I'd just say, if you hit a roadblock anywhere and this isn't going to work out, we need to know right away, we need to share that, but we're going to think, love you, optimism.
Correct, well, the big contingency on this whole thing is that the community's, the health metrics stay where they're at. I mean, that, I mean, that's a huge contingency, right? We can have the best plan in the world, but if, over the next week and a half, if we have huge, like what happened in March, I, I mean.
So we all have to work together to achieve those metrics, right?
Something that not one person in this room has any control, right?
Well, we can look at some new ways to look at the data, we're still going to do that, and try.
Community spread is community spread, Mike, I was, I, I'm just repeating what I've heard, okay? We will take, look and see if we can make the adjustments.
It only makes sense that our metrics reflect our population, it only makes sense.
It's, it's really not my decision, I mean, I'm relying on the medical fit, the fit, you know, people to, to help us with that. I understand the request, and if we can get our hands on that data, if it helps us be more informed in a better way, absolutely, okay?
Could only try.
I understand.
Okay, is there any, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Roll call, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, thank you, everybody.